Good afternoon. We'll call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, September 27th, 2023 to order at 4:00 P. M. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Daniels?
Present.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Loma?
Director Loma should be joining us.
Director Malpakam?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So five board members are in attendance in person. Director Art is joining us remotely today, and Director Loma should be joining us at any time. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Adoption of the agenda. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Hold on one second, let me catch up here. Director Malpakam?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you. Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
You threw me off. The ayes have it.
Thank you, sorry about that.
The agenda has been adopted as presented. We do have executive session today for roughly 90 minutes. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss security arrangements or investigations per CRS 2464024D, Particular Matter: Board Member Security Training and School Security Staffing and Negotiations, per CRS 2464024E, Particular Matter: Motor Vehicle Liability Claim.
Moved and seconded.
Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakam?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will enter into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 P. M. in the boardroom. Thank you. Good evening. Okay, good evening. Good evening. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Good evening. As much as possible, we tried to start on time. We did have executive session downstairs. That took a little bit longer than anticipated, so we will get started. Good evening to all of you. We are reconvening in public session, and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted as presented. It's good to see all of you this evening, especially our students and community and staff members out here, too. And from what I hear, several of our students put together a wonderful string performance out there in the foyer for the audience. When they walked in, you might have heard them. We were downstairs. I was training my ears to hear them, but I could not hear you guys. I'm sure your performance was wonderful, and I think some of those students are out there. So thank you for your performance, and I think you are the three that are left behind. There were others that were part of the group, too, so.
And that's Ian, Ashlyn, and Krista, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
In a minute. We'll get there. We'll get there. When I call you off. And October is Arts Month, and the Board is going to be adopting a resolution and celebration of that later this evening. So we will have a lot of arts-related celebrations, not only in the boardroom, but also in our schools in the coming month. And before we get into that, speaking of students, I do want to bring attention to one other student and introduce her to the Board and the audience. Annika Norman is a junior at Dougherty High School and is the chief editor of the student newspaper at Dougherty, and the newspaper is called the Spartan. It is a student-led publication, part of the journalism class at Dougherty. And I looked at some of your recent publications and also your website. Lots of skills that students learn to put together all the information out there at the high school level. So about six months back, Annika reached out to me, and she wanted to write an article about the role, responsibility of the Board, the Superintendent, and the general day-to-day operations of the district from the leadership level. And then we've been trying to figure out a time, and then earlier this week, she approached me again at a school event, and I invited her to the board meeting today. So she spent an hour with me yesterday, with me and Superintendent Gall at Queen Palmer yesterday, so hopefully you got some of the information that you wanted for your article yesterday. And welcome, and she's going to be covering the board meetings and writing an article about the board workings, and look forward to reading that. Welcome, Annika. Yeah, a future leader in the making, probably coming for one of our chair seats in the near future with that pledge of allegiance. The three students that we talked about from Jenkins, could you come up here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. It was the three students from Jenkins and the two students from Martinez that led us collectively in the pledge of allegiance. So thank you, students, for doing that. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is awards and recognition. Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
It's so exciting to start off with awards and recognitions, and you should see a trend that nearly every board meeting, we're celebrating some version of CTE or pathway opportunities. And so today, we're able to start with the team, the FBLA folks. And so, Melissa, if you want to read it, and if you're here for your Future Business Leaders of America National Leadership Conference board, please come forward so I can hand these to you while we tell everybody about your trip. Go ahead, Melissa.
Jenkins National FBLA winners. Downtown Atlanta, Georgia was home to the Future Business Leaders of America's FBLA National Conference in June. More than 14,000 students and teachers attended the conference, with 27 of those FBLA participants from Jenkins Middle School. These elite Jenkins students had qualified being the top two in the state for their competitive event or test. Most American business is small business, and business success doesn't happen by accident. It must be cultivated. FBLA taps young people early, teaching them about leadership, networking, and competition. National data shows that small business makes up 99.9% of all American business. This is the nation's engine, and these students want to be a part of it. Congratulations to these students. Logan Siniger, Luke Lamora, Christopher Vercelis, Jonathan Runnels, Remington Brown, Heidi Williams, Trulie Coop, Eliza Bernard, Sylvia Pado.
Okay, just a quick word from our coach, and then either student spokesperson. Want to tell us how great it was?
We had an amazing time. We definitely want to thank the funding that we got from D11, so appreciate all of that. Thank you, guys, for everything.
Nationals was a blast. It was such a great learning experience and such a great, like, area to make friends. I love FBLA and the connections that it's helped me make.
I loved FBLA. It was my first year doing it this year, and I was surprised that I made it all the way to Nationals, but walking up on that stage was truly an amazing experience.
Good luck. We'll see you all in those schools. Thanks so much. Thanks, Melissa. Great job, Tiffany.
And Mr. Hardy, I do, Mrs. Hardy was the one that started this program, if I remember right, at Jenkins. So she's not there at Jenkins any longer. She is still in District 11. Please convey our regards to Mrs. Hardy, too. Thank you.
Emily next. Yep. I'll do it. So our students get to great places because we have such incredible staff. You've noticed many of our board meetings, we talk specifically about what's happening at the school level. We have the most tremendous administrative staff as well, and we have an award to be able to present tonight that demonstrates that. Go ahead, Melissa.
The 2023 Jacqueline Medina Visionary Leadership Award from the Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented. Emily Andrews, gifted and talented K-12 facilitator, is the Jacqueline Medina Visionary Leadership Award winner for the 2023 from the Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented, CAGT. CAGT and the Colorado Academy of Educators for the Gifted, Talented, and Creative present this award to recognize outstanding leadership action of teachers, resource persons, coordinators, administrators, and directors in gifted education for the benefit of gifted students and their families. Two recipients, rural and larger district, will receive a monetary award to use toward professional development, gifted education endorsement, and gifted education institutes or conferences. Emily was nominated for demonstrating forward thinking and positive action and for providing leadership in gifted education. Congratulations, Emily.
I'm so grateful to be here. We're several members of my team, and I would like for them to come up as well, please. Thank you, friends. I'm so grateful to be accompanied tonight by the teams of staff members, who I've had the privilege of working with each and every day. Mark Hess, in the gifted office, shares his expertise about nonverbal learners with our whole team and across the state and many states near and far. So thank you very much for your work with that. Nicole Girarden and her multilingual team of staff members work with the gifted and talented office to identify multilingual students who are also gifted. Thank you. And Lauralee McDaniel and Hannah Atencio and the VAPA and GT teams co-facilitate the D11 Talent and Pike Speak process to identify gifted students in the visual and performing arts. Thank you. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention our gifted resource teachers, who work with our high-ability learners each and every day with our students, and we're just so thankful that they are promoting academic growth for our kids. Thank you very much.
Dougherty Dance Program selected to perform at National Dance Education Organization Conference. Dancers from Dougherty High School have been selected to perform as one of the opening acts at the National Dance Education Organization Conference, NDEO, on September 29th. They will have the opportunity to perform their piece at the opening concert for the national convention attended by dance teachers from around the country. Dougherty will join other dance programs from around the state to present the opening concert. They were handpicked from numerous submissions and represent the best dance programs our state has to offer. The convention will take place in Denver from September 28th through October 1st at the Hyatt Regency Denver at the Colorado Conference Center. Along with performing at the conference, students and teachers will take workshops and classes to continue to grow as educators and dancers. The NDEO conference is held annually in the fall and includes three full days of over 250 workshops, master classes, panels and paper presentations, social events and performances, plus a full day of pre-conference intensives. The conference brings educators together to explore and embrace their impact as leaders. Congratulations, Dougherty dancers. Have a great performance.
I'm going to ask our teacher, Emma, to talk a little bit about the work. I've been in that, in the studio space, and it's very inspiring, and if you can introduce our two students that are here today as well.
So at Dougherty High School, we have three different levels of dance: a beginning-level dance, an intermediate-level dance, and an advanced dance class. So our advanced dance students, Sue Cass Allen and Quinn Malmstrom, are both a part of, are going to be performing at this conference tomorrow for the opening, and it's really exciting. This is a conference that my professors from high school, from high school, from college, go to, both from my undergrad and my master's program. So it's really exciting that my teachers are going to be able to see the work that I've done, and also that my students are going to be exposed to so many different colleges and professors and people who they'll be able to talk to and say, "Oh, yeah, I performed at this thing," and they'll be able to say, "Oh, I saw you there," which is really powerful when we talk about students going into higher education.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Congratulations. Good luck tomorrow. Break a leg, right?
So congratulations to all the students and also Ms. Emily Andrews. So moving on. School spotlight today is Martinez Elementary School, and Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
As we get ready for October and visual and performing arts, we thought it would be a wonderful time to bring forward one of our pathway schools, Martinez, as a visual and performing arts school. The work happening at Martinez is just really eye-watering, to be able to see how the principal is going to come forward, Tara Berry here, and talk a little bit about the work, has been able to move from a school watch list to where they are today in such a short order of time in her first year as a principal. It's really just a testament, first year here as a principal, is, tells us that she knows exactly what she's doing and knew what she was doing before she got here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tara.
Well, it's for you, Board, but it's also for everyone that showed up. I'm so happy to introduce my students. They're going to sort of take lead in just a moment, so, guys, if you'll come along the front and just take a seat, and then, board members, be warned, you're going to be asked to get out of your seat. You got to do it with us. So we're very lucky to, first of all, I didn't do the work. I led the work. My teachers did the work. So for all my Martinez teachers that are here, if you could stand up and wave. It's a true collaborative effort, and we worked together, we leaned in, but we had all the talent we needed. We only had one new teacher last year, so we did the work with the team that we had, and I think that's very important. So when I talk to our families and our community, they're the ones that helped me always put these presentations together. It's never just me, because it's not me doing all the work. So our families have a lot of excitement about coming to Martinez as a visual and performing arts school, because it helps give our kids more than one way to discover what they know and to show what they know. Paper and pencil, it's always going to be there. It's always important, but I think that we're really preparing our kids in a really unique way to prepare for interviews and performance interviews that some of us didn't get the luxury of getting true preparation for. We just sort of got thrown into the fire and did a lot of sweat and anxiety to get through it. What our kids are going to do with you guys today is they're going to create a tableau. A tableau is a still picture to make, that you make with your body, to show your understanding of a concept. We're going to show you a very low-level one, an introductory one, but we can do this with all different levels of work. And Superintendent Gall, if I could get you to pass these around, this will provide you guys a little more context, but they can be low-level or high-level. We can do them for any subject matter, and when we do this, we connect with literacy and the story elements, scientific aspects of things that are so abstract and we don't always get to see. We can even do them with math. And in the picture, what you see is us working with Theater Without Borders. It's our third year working with Theater Without Borders. They work with the actors, and they create their own play that the actors then perform, and they have a say in. So there are writers, our producers, and our directors, and Theater Without Borders just really comes and helps them to move their bodies, think differently, gain confidence, and learn a lot more about who they are and what they can do with what they already have. With our growth, it was a big, it was a big journey for us. We had to get over the fact that COVID happened, because it happened to the whole world, right? Hence the word pandemic. And we had to start with, how did it change how we taught? How did it change how our kids learned? How did those, all that time in online learning, change the way that our kids thought and were stimulated? And our journey into visual and performing arts is really tackling a lot of that. But we had a lot of growth with our benchmarks. We didn't hit our goal. Our benchmark goal was 52. We were a little short. And then we wanted to get up to 60 with our growth for CMAS, but we're super proud of the work that we did, moving from high priority improvement to performance. But we had those numbers set because we wanted to get that state accreditation in one year, and we fell a few points short, but I'm so proud of our team. All of our teachers showed huge growth, but we had a teacher duo asked to try something different and do it a little different and hone in on their craft of reading and math. And so although we had huge growth everywhere, Ms. Vanderdose, if you could stand up. Ms. Vanderdose and her partner teacher, who's not here, it's her husband's 55th birthday, they led the way, and they had more growth than any other grade level, any other content, and they had higher academic achievement. So I just want to take one second and give. So we got there, but now we got to stay there and keep growing. So our goal for this year is, in a nutshell, raising academic achievement, closing our gaps. We want to be sure that every student is meeting their potential and growing at least a year, if not ending on grade level or above. And then we're going to be working together, students collaborating more, and our staff working collaboratively with a collective responsibility agreement that every student in our school is our kid, everyone. Fifth grade, fourth grade, kinder, my class, your, it doesn't matter, we're all together. But the way that we were able to make the move that we made is because we had tremendous support from the Northeast Network, Mr. Joyner, anything that we needed. He's probably talking about another way to help this school. But his, our area coaches showed up to support our team. He coached me. We had some hard conversations, and he helped me grow. He helped us get into any support, any wild idea that I had that he thought might grow kids. And then we were, thanks to D11, selected to be part of the University of Virginia project, and we have great support there, really thinking through, how do we really stay mission and vision-driven? And if we're not, what we're doing isn't meeting those, like, aligning with that, we're doing the wrong thing, because every system works exactly as is, is producing the results it was designed to produce. So we got to rethink our design and constantly be iterating to make sure that that worked. So a big shout-out to D11 and Darren Joyner, our whole Northeast Network, all the principals in it, and everything that they provided for us to continue growing. And another huge thank you for letting us continue with that, even though we're no longer high priority. Family support and partnership, I've just been blown away. This is a picture of one of our community beautification days with C.O.S.I. Love You, and this was a small turnout, because it looks small, because half of them are in the building painting. But every time we had a community event, our school is packed, parking is bad, sorry if you get complaints about our parking lot. We're growing, and we've grown by 100, I think, enrollment, from last year to this year, and we're okay with that. We'll get creative somehow with parking, but every time we have an ask, they show up. We have a lot of parents here supporting us tonight, and our community just shows up for us in every way, in shape, and form that I can think of. P.S., Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00 is our Fall Festival. Please come and join us. We have a giant craft fair and lots of fun and games. Get your state fair slash Halloween intro on Saturday, 2:00 to 5:00. Martinez Elementary, 6460 bickers. So I want, before we get into the tableau with the Board, I just wanted to open up for a quick Q and A that you might have for me, and then we're going to turn it over to the troop kid, people that did all of the work, and that's my awesome students.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Principal Berry, for being here. All the staff members who are here, and we are looking forward to the tableau that we are going to hopefully get the hang of it.
You'll get it.
With the students. Both, do you have any quick comments or questions? Director Bankus?
I want to thank you for bringing your school and bringing your team all along with you to make such an improvement in such a short time, and best wishes for it to continue. And I also want to thank Mr. Gall for making sure that we spotlight our schools, who are really standing out and really doing the work that we all come every Wednesday night to make sure happens. So thank you both. Thank you all.
Thank you, and I hope to see you again at the Fall Festival.
That's, that's the way to go with. They say that you have to repeat it seven times or something like that, so you've got, like, five more times.
Fall Festival, Fall Festival.
Director Nelson?
Thank you, and I will see you at the Fall Festival from 2:00 to 5:00. So I just want to say thank you to the staff. I obviously have personal connection to the school, so it means a lot. I want to point out that you not only hit growth, but also achievement, and that's amazing, so congrats. And the question that I have is, how did you do it? Can you, like, give me a couple of things, and I'll give an example. When I came in, Martinez was one of my schools last year as a board member, and I said, "Pretend I'm not a parent. I'm going to learn stuff I know." So you showed me the wall where you had teachers move kids according to how they actually were doing their names, and so I have to imagine that played a part into the success you saw, because when you see that child's name, I think it probably hits a lot closer to home.
Yeah, so what Ms. Nelson is talking about is that we have data walls, and so we looked at every step of the way. Where can we gather data that will inform us on what our kids know and what they have yet to learn? And for those that have learned it, how can we keep pushing them forward? And if they haven't, what can we, what supports can we provide for them? So we look at data all the time. Our teachers are looking at their exit ticket or their demonstration of learning for our kids, and they're like, okay, who got it? Who didn't? How do I need to adjust tomorrow's instruction? Sometimes they're really cheeky, and it happens in the middle of their reading and math block, and then they're able to pull them into a small group immediately to correct any misconceptions that they have. We have a what-I-need-now time, like, an intervention time built in to our school, and so we're taking it one step further. Last year, we extended our reading block from 60 minutes to 90. This year, we're going up to 120 minutes, so we can get all of our interventions in during school. And then our math block, last year, we moved from 45 to 60. This year, we're moving up from 60 to 90 minutes. So we're sweating the small stuff, and that will allow us to pull in our Kegan Strategies that we're working on this year and our visual and performing arts. But really, it's like, every student matters. Every part of the skill that they need to know matters, and how they feel at school matters. And so I'd say the two things that we did most is work on our relationships, working relationships as adults with one another and with our kids, and two, we just really looked at the data and saw what it was telling us, how we can respond to it, and then how we can proactively respond to it, so that we have less interventions and more extensions to make.
Awesome. So just to clarify, you increased the amount of time that each student was spending on math and on reading. That's fantastic. Makes total sense.
And to make sure that our science block and our social studies block gets in, we have found ways to pull both science and social studies into our reading block with a nonfiction reading focus. And so we did that, too, because the Lexile level for the science assessments is infinitely higher than their normal grade level reading, because it's technical language, and so they're practicing that a lot as well. And so our kids are getting a lot of everything, sometimes without knowing that they're getting it.
That's the best. So just, I did not realize, did you say that Ms. Vanderdose and Ms. Showstack, that was their first year of splitting?
No. No, but they had to sell me on it.
Oh, gotcha.
They had to sell me on it, because I've done it a lot of different ways, and I really just want to ensure that as we're coaching our teachers, we're building them up, as we're building our kids, and in elementary, I think it's really important for our teachers to have their kids for all subjects, because then they have more flexibility to provide intervention. But Ms. Vanderdose and Ms. Showstack were like, "It works. Let us try it. What compromises can we make? How can we meet in the middle?" And then again, this show's like, "Let's maybe self-contained," and they're like, "Nope." And so we do what makes sense, and we do what's best for our kids, and they push me to do it. So I'd also say our staff pushes me hard, and I listen, and if I don't, they get me. So I listen.
I mean, it makes sense to allow a teacher to I mean, it makes sense to allow a teacher to work in their area of strength, and then the kids will benefit. And so my daughter saw that, definitely. Last thing I had, this is my own curiosity. I've been thinking about planning time and that sort of thing for our staff. My own children have shared that sometimes the teachers will have like a sub for half a day and so that the daily teacher can go get some extra planning time or coaching time or something like that. Can you just speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we're really strategic with how we spend our money, and we try to spend our money on our people. And we try to protect them as people. So a lot of good work and research shows that if we do what we call, I call, look forward, look back. But their extended planning is called look forward. And then what I call it back is our data analysis meetings. And so what we do is we provide our teachers subs, we get roving subs, and our teachers have two to four hour blocks of time to work with myself, my assistant principal, and our instructional coach, and then whoever else I can get to come to meet the need, our math department, Paul Bungie and his team. Paul, Phil, and Liz are amazing. Jamie Elkins-Green comes in. And anybody that's got expertise that could help us fill a gap, they come in and they coach us and they work. And so that some of it's facilitated and then some of it is guided, so our teachers have that planning so they can plan a quarter out, a month out, they can respond to their planning. And then part of it this year we're pulling in is the full MTSS model, the multi-tiered student support model, so that we can also talk about behaviors, absences, needs that we know of. And so it's tricky sometimes to have a teacher out for half a day, but they're still in the building. Everybody's checking on everybody. But this way, our teachers get that hard work done during the day, and then they get to be humans. They get to go home and be husbands, wives, parents, just humans, and be rested and come back with a more full cup. Now, I still have to kick them out of the building sometimes because they're so dedicated. But we try to do, bring all the support in during the day when it's most available and make their school day most productive.
Are you funding those substitutes through your own school budget? Or I'm just thinking, how do we help this grow?
We are funding through our MTSS funds. That's how we're predominantly utilizing those funds. And then we've had the grace, the gracious support of Nicole Otmer and Brandon Comfort, and we're using our AMP money and to put on people and not external programs or stuff. So it's all coming from the district. Thank you, D-11. And then to make it sustainable long-term, we're looking at what grants are out there, what unique things are out there that we can do. And, but it's always within protecting our teachers. We're not protected in the way that other professionals are. Our day doesn't have a clock in, clock out time. And even if it did, they wouldn't do it. So we just try to put our money and our support into our teachers so they can put all of their energy into our kids.
Yeah, I mean, if you're depleted, you're not gonna have anything to give. So this is an opportunity for them to fill their cups back up and then be able to pour into our kids. So that was all I had. Thank you guys so much, and I'll see you Tuesday, or Saturday, at two to five for the Martinez Fall Festival.
Shameless. So right now, our kids are going to...
No, we have a couple of more comments.
Oh, sorry.
Director Loma.
Well, first of all, the first thing I noticed is your leadership style is very servant and transformational. I'm not sure if that's your intention, but that's what you sound like to me. And it's very evident when you're accountable not only to your teachers, but you're also accountable to your reports. You mentioned that Mr. Joyner, which is very, to me, just rang out because without that, nothing gets done. So, you know, when I first got here, I was always trying to push, we need to double up on the English and double up on math. And so, you know, the board, we came up with, you know, trying to add more time to the school day. And it was a big old battle. We had a fight. You should see the battle between us and the union. You know, five minutes, two minutes here, it was like, oh my goodness, we just want to increase education. But you proved that the best solutions come from the ones closest to the work.
That's right.
And so even in our attempt, our feeble attempt, I would call it, to try to increase that seat time, you did it, and then you didn't need our help. And so I just see the creativity that's flowing, the way you accomplished the increased English, the increased math, and then you're saying you want to increase it more. You know, so to me, it's very evident on those strategies that you're doing. I really appreciate that because the ones closest to the work always have the best solutions. So you have to excuse me for trying to impose a solution that I thought would work when I should have just talked to you in the first place.
Just get me and go to the teachers.
So I guess I might have to come on Saturday as well because of that.
Two to five. Thank you.
Well, I think that's six by my count, so I will wrap it up. I will be there Saturday. Thank you. I'll piggyback on what Director Loma said. And that's what I was going to end with. When Director Nelson asked what created the change, you talked about all the systems and supports that you have put into place and also about your staff. As a leader, that's what you need to be doing, giving the credit down line. But from where I stand, you made a difference in that school. So I know I'm speaking completely transparently out here, and the staff there knows about that too. There was some turbulence in leadership at Martinez. You brought that stability out there at that building in one year. And jumping two levels from where you were, priority improvement to performance, that's a no easy task. That happened because of the collaborative leadership that you had. And one of the things that you mentioned is that you listen to your staff. They are experienced staff out there and they are providing feedback to you, and you take their input. So kudos to what you are doing out there. I expect, I think, if I look by the corner of my eye, Rochelle Williams is probably saying like, hey, we are out there at Northeast too, so you guys have, you know, a good team out there. And I expect all the schools in the Northeast under your leadership, Ms. Williams' leadership, and Mr. Kopley's leadership out there.
Don't forget Stacy Brisbane, she'll kill me.
Yeah, Stacy Brisbane is out there, and then the King Principal is also, the new Principal is out there, Ms. Kruger. Yeah, so you guys are going to do amazing things out there. And when you say you increased hundred students in enrollment, that's quite an achievement too, you know? The work that you are doing is resonating in the community out there. That's why parents are choosing to come back into District 11 and Martinez out there. So great work for what you guys are doing out there. So thank you for being here. When, in the beginning of the year, we talked about culture of high expectations and no excuses, you displayed that, okay, in spades. I want you to know that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the students.
All right. Board, are you ready for this? So we're gonna let our students speak freely and use their big voices, but I'm gonna turn it over to them. And then you guys are gonna have to get up out of your seat and do the final tableau. Don't frown at me. Our kids, stand up. You ready to roll? Face the board. All right, take off.
Arts integration means having kids express their imagination and creativity regularly at school. Plays their Martinez integrates art. Dance and theater includes expression, feelings through their body movements at school.
Visual arts, music, including dance, orchestra, and performing arts.
Back to stage and theater across borders is an opportunity our fifth grade participated in, showing academic standards in performance.
One type of short academic-based performing arts and is doing a tableau.
Acting out a scene from a story or historical event.
Our tableau will be showing a scene from the famous story Tortoise and the Hare.
All right, take off, guys.
My character is showing the hare out in front.
My character is showing the tortoise slow behind.
My character is the raccoon starring in it.
Now we invite our board members to create a tableau of the movie. Please, it's two groups of four. Two groups of four. You guys come down here.
Okay, let's do it.
All right.
It's our story.
Which is our story?
Tortoise and the Hare. Yep.
Can I am much faster? We have to finish the rest. In two separate groups.
You're gonna do one, and they're gonna... That's cute. I love that. All right, group, you've got two minutes. All right, one minute, or unless you're ready. Okay, so Board, as you get into your position, you have to be ready to explain what each of you represent. So Gall, your group, wanna go first?
I'm the hare. I ran too fast and I ran out. I'm the tortoise, going slow but steady.
There you go.
I'm a tree and holding on to a tree. Oh, yeah, true. Good, good, good.
All right, group two.
I'm the raccoon too. I'm the flagger.
I'm the tortoise because I got a big head.
I'm the hare doing what I love doing best, talking to people.
Thank you for participating with this cohort. Can we give our students one more round of applause?
And thank you, parents, too, for bringing all the students out here. Superintendent Gall, do you have any closing thoughts on Martinez?
No, I think you all have asked and made the right statements. The formula is consistent. If you get strong leadership who understands how to motivate the talent that's already in the building in a coherent and aligned way on a common mission and vision, you can make miracles happen. So we saw that happen time and time again last year. Martinez is just an example of one of many. To the commentary on what we call the Sophie's Choice of how does a teacher give up contact time to invest more in the professional development opportunities, we're working closely with CSEA to understand what does that look like next year in a more sustainable way because our elementary schools are in a bit of a pinch. The way the schedule is built for this year doesn't afford them as much opportunity to get that opportunity for the professional development. And so we'll be coming through the Scheduling Committee to the Board with recommendations for that for next year. So what a great example of seeing how it works.
Thank you. Thank you, all the staff and everybody for being here. Moving on, Superintendent's report, and I turn it over to you back again.
Great, thanks. If I could get Blake and Aubriana to come forward to do their teacher shout-outs as we pull the slides up. Who's got the clicker? I believe you're first, Blake, if I remember the slides.
I'm going to be doing a shout-out on Ms. V for being a good teacher. I like Ms. Vanderdose. I like Ms. Vanderdose gets to, and she only teaches math. It's my favorite subject. Ms. Vanderdose really loves math. She is strict, but she makes it fun. And she sometimes makes jokes. She motivates us by giving us ways to earn time doing things we like. Ms. Showstack loved writing. It's not my favorite, but Ms. Showstack makes it easier and fun to learn. I like, I like, I feel like they prepared me for fourth and fifth grade.
Before I call Aubriana forward, I just, people need to understand, that was a student thanking teachers from two years ago, right? So when we talk about the impact that teachers have on student lives, that's an example of here's now a fifth grader who's thinking in his brain, I'm doing well in fifth grade because of the prep and the support I had in third grade as well. So Aubriana, your turn.
I would like to give a shout-out to my teacher, Mr. Hawes. Mr. Hawes wants us to try and do our best with all of our work. He is encouraging and tries to be funny. He has taught me that I don't try to learn and take, and learn new things and take risks. I really miss out on cool things. He always says, if you fail to prepare, be prepared to fail. But then he helps us and doesn't let us fail. Thank you.
Mr. Haas, Haas, you may have to try harder to be funny.
Keeping with our theme of being thankful for the support that we have in our classrooms every day, I remind folks to get to our social media. Two for Tuesdays Teacher Shout-outs is back. And we have Ginny from Queen Palmer and Brett from North. The write-up for Ginny summarizes Ginny Bordeaux, gives students, she gives students the ability to make meaningful choices and empowers them with a variety of options to meet their individual needs. And she is a gifted and talented teacher at Queen Palmer. And then Brett Loman, a sixth grade social studies teacher right across the street here at North Middle School. He was tireless with his commitment to his students, all while ensuring each substitute for the vacant social studies position was trained and prepared with a lesson each and every day. And so reaching beyond his own classroom as well. So big round of applause for both Ginny and Brett. And I'm gonna ask Natasha to stand up and come forward for everybody to be able to see her. So we are so excited to announce our new Director of Equal Opportunity Programs and Bud Service. Natasha, can you pronounce your last name out loud for us?
Conogee.
Conogee. Natasha's a Mitchell grad. So we love when our own graduates come back to us to help us continue to deliver on excellence. We're super excited to fill this position. It's critical for every one of our employees to understand that their rights are important to the district and the board. And having this level of expertise in-house to be able to support it ensures that everybody feels that they're a valued member of the team. Welcome to Natasha. And although not as pretty as some of the slides we had run over the last several weeks on our CMAS results, the state takes a couple of extra weeks to get the CMAS results out on what the state calls the alternative education campuses. We call them opportunity campuses. But I wanted everyone to see that the excellence and the positivity that's happening in District 11 is not restricted just to our traditional comprehensive school experience. We have the corner on the market in El Paso County on how it is that we handle kids who aren't quite sure that the comprehensive experience is gonna work for them. And so you'll see there, every one of our schools moving up and forward, and we are just a hair short of all four of our opportunity schools being listed as performance. I'm certain that that will happen next year, and we're super excited. How about a round of applause, Dr. Scott Mendelsburg, stand up. And Scott's our area superintendent that helps lead that team. And so if you're over at Tesla or over at Tesla or over at Wausen, because that's where we are in three different spaces now, please seek out some of the leaders and the team members there, and please give them our thanks and appreciation.
I think the leaders are up here, right?
Are they? Are you here? Please stand up. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. You're blending in. And so John and Jason come forward too. Let's bring them all up forward to the podium here because we have two people that were standing, that stayed standing. Because we have two people that were standing, that stayed standing and just got a little more swagger. And if Stacy and MC can come forward too. So just come forward and introduce yourselves to the community and the schools that you lead, so everybody knows who you are. There you go, MC, there you are.
All right, I'm Dr. MC Ruben Clapper, and I'm the proud dragon principal of the VJU School.
Hi, everybody, John Bailey, I'm the principal at Achieve Online and the digital school.
I'm Jason Miller, the principal at Tesla, at Tesla Middle School, and Tesla High School.
I just have one. I'm Stacy Miller, the principal at Odyssey, early college and career options. I did none of that work, though. I've been the principal for two, two months.
But you're happy to be here.
Yes. Well, we're thankful for all of you and all the work that you've done for our students. Okay, thank you. Switch to FCPS slides, because that was my last slide. Okay, the other thing that we promised that we would do off of last year was continue to talk about our family, school and community partnerships. So Velvet, if you want to come forward, and I will bring you the clicker.
All right, good evening, board. This year, the D11 FSTP Collaborative is working to help schools identify plans for a spectrum of strategies to improve family engagement. At these superintendent spotlights, we'll be celebrating schools that have done an exceptional job of incorporating a variety of practices from community events that establish trust and community to intentional family involvement and participation in student academics. Jennifer Schulte, Nancy Marshmello, Jessica Wise and myself, Velvet Steponik are members of the FSTP Celebration Subcommittee. All right. What are some of the strategies and why are they needed? High-impact strategies, bolded in orange, are individualized, focused on student learning and help facilitate relationship building. Do not think that the strategies on the low-impact end of the slide are bad. Celebrations, potlucks and school newsletters are all important strategies for creating an inclusive and positive school community. However, low-impact strategies are often school-led, not learning-focused, and require the family to come to the school. High-impact strategies are often school-led, are often school-led, not learning, I'm sorry. Yeah, however, high-impact strategies are more often teacher-led, learning-focused, individualized, build relationships or support academic partnering, and don't require the family to come to school. We want to encourage our schools to use strategies across the continuum. Our spotlight school tonight does this. But before we get to our spotlight school, we want to celebrate practices from our district that were awarded recognition by the state and were included in the 2023 Promising Partnership Practices. The purpose of this publication is to highlight partnering with families and the community for student success. The practices are submitted and then reviewed by a selection committee. This guide is put together by the State Advisory Council for Parents and the Colorado Department of Education and has been published since 2018. District 11 had four FSTP practices selected for 2023. Two of the practices chosen are from specific schools. Academy ACLs, Chili and Board Game Night was chosen for welcoming all families and building trusting relationships. And Mann Middle School's Safe Trick or Treat Night was chosen for welcoming all families and creating an inclusive culture. In addition, two district-level practices that came from the D11 FSTP collaborative work were selected. Listening Circles was chosen for speaking up for every child and creating an inclusive culture. And the FSTP Celebration Presentations at the boards that we're doing tonight were also, was also chosen for communicating effectively and building trusting relationships. Congratulations to D11. And all of the 40 practices from across the state that were selected are available on the CDE website. So our FSTP Spotlight School for this evening is Freedom Elementary School. Freedom is located in the northeast area of District 11 and it's right on the border with D20 and D40 tonight. Tonight, we want to celebrate Freedom's work for building solid partnerships with families and community. I'm going to give an overview of some of Freedom's work and then we'll let the Freedom staff speak about the impact of the work to their school. So first, the Freedom Block Party. The Freedom Block Party involves community members, family members and staff working together to get the whole community excited about the new school year. Next, the Freedom Cafe is a place where staff, parents and community members come together to provide input and feedback on the school improvement plan. This is done twice during the year, once after the first semester and once during the second semester. Freedom has many, whoops, sorry. Freedom has many community partners. These pictures showcase all the amazing community sport that helped the school be a better place. The Air Force Band played at the Veterans Day Assembly. Texas Roadhouse donated lunch to the staff. City Serve is volunteer time, Rock Church supports, and Wendy Silvano, an author, presented to the students. Freedom is building CTE pathways. The First Annual Elementary Robotics Competition happened at Freedom in the spring. The event included over six elementary schools participating, middle, high and high school students, as well as local tech companies supported and worked as judges. My son went and helped there this, this, in the spring. Finally, Freedom gives back to their community. They received 150 blankets to donate to the local animal shelter. They received over 400 cans of goods to donate to Care and Share. And their Giving Tree asked for hats, gloves and socks that they donated to a local retirement home community. Freedom is doing great work. Now we want to give the school a few minutes to share what the impact is at Freedom of these promising FSTP practices.
All right. All right, as a principal of Freedom, I'm honored to be here tonight. But today we celebrate, and we, today we celebrate and recognize a tremendous achievement, our strong community-family partnership at Freedom. This achievement is not just a feather in our cap. It's a testament of the power of unity, dedication and collaboration that defines our remarkable school. First and foremost, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the incredible Freedom staff. You guys. You guys are the backbone of our school. The guiding lights in our students' lives and the reason behind our success today. Your dedication is inspiring and I owe you a debt of gratitude for your tireless efforts in fostering a strong community partnership. So stand up. Stand up, come on. And for putting up with me.
Hi, I'm Liz Furillo and I have had the great privilege to work at Freedom as the assistant principal. I want to express my deep appreciation to our Freedom families. Their willingness to work with us, attend meetings and engage in open and constructive communication has been instrumental in building a harmonious and effective partnership. We must recognize the exceptional support from our wider community. To our community members, you have played a pivotal role in fostering an environment where our students can thrive. Your willingness to volunteer, provide resources and share your expertise enriches the educational experience for our students and helps us to create a stronger, more vibrant community overall. So I get the privilege to introduce Polly, Ardita and Justin, who will speak about the impact of our partnership. And we are the Freedom, oh.
We are the Freedom Falcons and we are stronger together!
Okay, hi, good evening, I am shaking, so. Just so everybody is aware, okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for your time today. Okay, I'm going to turn this down. Okay.
Introduce yourself.
We're good. It's going to be fine.
Introduce yourself first.
Everybody.
You're good.
Okay. My name is Polly Doring and I am here on behalf of Rock Family Church, who has been a proud partner of Freedom Elementary for this past year. As a mom to a four-year-old boy, a licensed early childhood educator and an advocate for the rights of children myself, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for all that you do to support our children, both seen and unseen. It is truly an honor to stand here today. In just this year, sponsoring Freedom Elementary, the people of Rock Family Church have joined together to purchase backpacks, school supplies for students at the beginning of each of the school years. Our church has sponsored families in need for Christmas, ensuring that every child experiences the joy of receiving presents while still maintaining the family's dignity. We all know how important that is. Not only this, but we have rallied people to get involved with planning meetings, block parties and city serve projects, encouraging others to serve in the community as a community. We see the impact we could all have in the world if we unite together. And there are a lot of families in our church who are ready and willing to help you serve united in our world, in our community, however we can. Our church has provided resources and supplies to the incredible educators of Freedom Elementary, equipping them with what they need so they can continue pouring into our students and families. We believe in supporting and investing in people. And educators deserve everything we can give for who they are and all they do. I think every one of us in this room can attest to the hard work and efforts our educators are putting in every single day. Let me just say, my church appreciates our educators and we are honored to empower them as they empower our children. Rock Family Church is here for the community. We are here to partner with schools and with districts for the sake of the children and families around us. We are here to love everyone, because everyone deserves to experience the love of Jesus. Thank you all again for your time this evening. I look forward to serving our community together.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ardita Bunch and I was going to talk to them, so I'm so sorry you just got to my back. She said it's going to be just a couple people. I'm really social, but this is a lot of people, so. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm here because I have two children that.
You still get to, you still get to speak in the microphone.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Hello, okay. I'm here because I have two children that attend Freedom Elementary. This is our fourth year. We have an eight-year-old and a four-year-old. And we also live in the same neighborhood as Freedom is located in. And they run to school every morning, which is really, really sweet. I'm here to tell you all how grateful I am for all the teachers at Freedom. I'm not going to cry. The staff and also the principal, she's outstanding. I've, from the first day I met, so I met Dr. Williams in the preschool line and she was introducing herself to every single parent. This was two years ago. And she also had written emails at 10:00 PM that night. I was up working and I told her she's working too hard, but that's how we met. Our biggest priority for our children is that they're safe, that they learn and that they have fun. So I'm here to talk about the community engagement, because at this point, I volunteer in the kitchen. I volunteer at, we called it the parent meeting, not PTA. So people come. There was. The community engagement has just been above and beyond. Freedom has organized events such as the block party, which was on my birthday, thank you. The entire community was invited to participate. It was on all the Facebook pages and everybody was really, really excited, especially for face painting. The next big thing is going to be trunk or treat. And Field Day was absolutely amazing. And then, like I said, the parent meetings, which are undercover PTA meetings. It is obvious that the teachers and the staff deeply care for our children and our community. They're so kind, they're so loving and they're so extremely hardworking. And I can say this from personal experience, because I am now a substitute teacher for District 11. And. And I experienced that on Monday. So thank you all, all the teachers in this room. I'm here to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, from all the parents that bring their children to Freedom, from the neighborhood and from my husband as well. He couldn't be here because he has to take care of our children. So that's all, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I think there's one more person behind you that's going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the final one, so. I'm Justin Edmison, I'm the SAC Chair and PTA President for Freedom Elementary. And shamelessly, yes, I will attest to the undercover meetings there. So a lot of what we do has already been talked about, so I would like to point out the whys of why we want to be more involved in the community and why we want to bring in more business partners. And I'm sure a lot of you know this already, but just to reiterate, it's for our enrollment, it's for our success, it's for our continued growth. As you know, a lot of families choose where they live, where they go to school based on the success of the school that's near them. If we can't bring in that kind of a community and show them that we're engaged, we're involved and we're committed, then what are we? So as you've seen, hopefully, earlier this year, we got nominated and voted the Gazette's Best of the Springs for our school. Along with one of our teachers being voted for Best of Teacher as well. That comes from that very same trust and that community building. Most of what we focused on is with the parents and neighbors. We've recently started bringing in actual businesses, because we believe that every business should actually be involved just as much as a parent. The families that live in their neighborhoods impact their whole business, right? And we're educating their future customers, we're educating their future employees. So building that continuity is, to me, very vital. I love to have Rock Family Church here, just thank you for that. I would love to have more businesses like that, more organizations like that. I recently had the privilege of actually sitting at a District 2 Cafe Talk. Not that I'm a trader or anything, but it was for work. And the way that they do it is something that I would love to see here. We try to do it on the school level, but what they do is above and beyond. They have an entire district involved where every school is represented, sitting at the table with businesses surrounding them, talking about their needs. And the table I was at was so engaged, so enthralled. And everyone left with, here's what I know I can do to impact my school. Action plans were made, everyone's following up on it. And I would love for that to be made here, not just the school level, but on the district side as well. So with that, I do turn it back over to you.
So thank you to Freedom, thank you for the schools who did it. And we'll continue to celebrate schools every month. I hope you appreciated actually hearing from some of the school, from people from the school. Thank you.
We are almost done with the superintendent's report, but we did save the best for last. So Laura Lee can come forward. We wanted to do a special in preparation for our Arts Month for next month. And in kind of closing out, how it is that we think about the importance of arts in schools.
And before they, Laura Lee comes here, I want to thank everybody here from Freedom. I know that you guys are ready to leave, so thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the Rock Family Church to partnering with us. And thank you for your comments too, ma'am. I know that I had a conversation with you too. And Justin, I've had numerous conversations with you. And when he's talking about business partnerships, I just had a conversation with Justin yesterday. He is not just talking words, he is leading by example. He works for a local business. And we were talking about how we can support more schools in District 11. And the program that you are talking about, D2, Justin, I was there with you. And Jessica Wise, our coordinator, was out there too. So we are talking about bringing something similar to District 11. Thank you all for being here and thank you for this amazing partnership. As I said, good things are happening out there, so. Okay. Back to you, Ms. McDaniel, and arts recognition.
Thank you, Superintendent Goll and Board of Education, for allowing us to be here to celebrate visual and performing arts and the kickoff of Arts Month. My name is Laurie Lee McDaniel and I'm the Visual and Performing Arts Facilitator. And along with general music, instrumental music, vocal music, dance, art and theater teachers throughout our 57 schools, we work to provide arts experiences and educational opportunities for all students in D11. Arts are recognized as a core academic. Arts are recognized as a core academic subject under the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and as of 2020, all 50 states plus the District of Columbia have adopted standards for learning visual and performing arts. So what does this mean? Why arts in schools? The nation's arts and culture sector, which includes nonprofit, commercial, and education, is $876.7 billion industry that supports 4.6 million jobs. Let those numbers sink in in just one minute. That is 4.2 of the nation's entire economy, a larger share of GDP than powerhouse sectors such as agriculture, transportation, and utilities. Ninety percent, 91% of Americans believe that arts are a part of a well-rounded K-12 education. In both low and high SES groups, eighth graders with a history of arts engagement were more likely than other students to read a newspaper at least once a week. Which is why we are extremely grateful and excited that we have a board and a superintendent and amazing teachers all that come together and support the arts in D11. So let's talk about some fun stuff. Our new partnerships for D11 this year. We have DJ Hoppa. He runs a company called DJ Coach. And in an effort to prepare students for an ever-changing workforce, D11 is committed to providing effective, hands-on partnerships for students and teachers. Through DJ Coach, students will be ready to take on performance opportunities in the community and gig as a DJ. This was actually brought to us after a Music Will Conference by Kim Kincaid, and she is the band director at Coronado High School. Also new this year, we are now officially a partner of the Met Opera. This directly connects texts to performing arts, and our pilot schools for this opportunity is Martinez, Columbia, and Audubon. Thank you, Channing Suction. Front Range Theater Company is also producing Beyond the Grave, and this is an experience our students get. It's a literature-based performance experience for high school theater students to perform at the Evergreen Cemetery in mid-October with professional actors from across our region. Yeah, let's give a hand for that. We continue to engage our community arts partners. We continue to partner with arts organizations in our community striving to provide students with arts enrichment experiences. Two other things I would like to highlight. This is actually going to be the third year where the Gifted and Talented and Visual and Performing Arts Departments have worked together to adapt an award-winning regional process to better fit the needs of our students here in D11. Through this process, we offer students the opportunity to be identified as gifted and talented specifically in their arts area. A-plus arts integration work has remained, it's continued at both Columbia and Martinez Elementary Schools. By teaching core academic subjects and the arts in equal importance, arts integration promotes multiple ways of learning and encourages elasticity in the brain, as well as a deeper and quicker development of neural pathways. And I'm gonna let our kiddos talk for just a moment.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades.
Whereas arts education comprising a rich array of disciplines including dance, music, theater, media arts, literature, design, and visual arts is a core academic subject and an essential element of a complete and balanced education for all students.
Whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, discipline and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understandings across the curriculum, as well as personal growth outside the classroom, all of which support the D11 graduate profile for student success.
Whereas to succeed in today's economy, students must masterfully use words, images, sounds, and movement to communicate.
Whereas when schools and communities deliver high-quality learning opportunities in, through, and about, the arts for children, extraordinary results occur.
Whereas arts education has a demonstrated ability.
To increase attendance rates, student engagement, graduation rates, and student achievements, especially for at-risk and underserved students.
Whereas attracting and retaining the best teachers is vital and can be achieved by ensuring that schools embrace the arts, becoming havens for creativity and innovation, and...
Whereas art is integral to the lives of every American.
And is essential to the health and vitality of Pike's Peak Region and of the nation. Now, therefore be it.
Resolved that the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education reaffirms the importance of the arts as an essential element of a well-rounded, strong academic education. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education supports the designation of October 2023 as Arts Month, and calls on all District 11 employees and families to observe the month with creative activities throughout the Pike's Peak Region and School District 11.
Just a real quick round, any phone from the board for Laura Lee?
Well, I'll just start off. That's the most creative way to get a resolution read in the board meeting.
You know, and I have to thank Jen Olson, she's our arts, she's here. Jen, where are you? This was Jen Olson's brainchild. She said, why not we get kids involved? And she's our arts integration specialist this year for VAPA, and a brilliant human being. So yeah, can we give Jen a round of applause? And Rex, yeah.
Director Loma.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that. That was excellent, the way you incorporated that. And then I just, I think it's unfair that I didn't have the opportunity to have a DJ class. When I was growing up, we got in trouble for doing that. And then, and that was, I thought that was, that's, I started laughing. I go, I could just see them now, mixing and bobbing their head and having a good old time. So yeah, that was excellent. And I'm not sure, have I shared my dance experience? Let me share this of why I like arts. Did I share that already? I don't even know. I never, okay. I, you know, like me, I'm late on a lot of things, and I was late on signing up, so there was nothing available. The only thing I could take was dance. And here I am, this guy from the neighborhood, you know, macho. No, dance? I ain't got a dance, you kidding me? Well then, I had no choice. I go to the class and I open the door, and I notice one thing. There were nothing but girls and me. Now, I'm not that smart, but I realized, I just hit the jackpot. So here is a 16-year-old boy, and I walk in there. Guess I was the most sought-after person in that classroom because everybody wanted to dance with the guy. So that, I learned the foxtrot, you know, the waltz, I learned every type of dance. People say, you look, I can dance all those. I learned that in high school, even part of the arts. So that actually brought me, well, you know, how important it was because it really settled me down because I was not going in the right direction. And that kind of put me on pause long enough to get some bearings and stay in the school. And so, and I had other motivating factors to stay in school, but that's another story. But it was my dance experience, so I really appreciate the DJ and the dancing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that, Director Loma, with us. Now we know a little bit more about your dancing skills. And I know that Director Bankers were there, maybe other directors were there at the kickoff event at Gary Berry Stadium. The Doerty students put that performance together. They brought the, I would say roof down, there is no roof out there at Gary Berry. They brought the house down out there. It was quite a performance by those students out there, and I think they have some type of performance today at their school.
Their band concert is at 7:30 tonight.
Yeah, so we look forward to a month of art celebrations in our schools, strongly encourage our schools to invite our board too to performances that may happen. We are, if there are dance performances, invite Director Loma, not me. Especially if we have to dance, so. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all the staff that are here too regarding the, I see Rex Reed out there, and I don't know the rest of the people, I see some of you out there. Thank you all for being here.
That completes the Superintendent's Report.
Director Nelson.
I was just gonna ask, the folks that are here because of it being Arts Month, I know I recognize some music teachers in the audience, can you all stand so that we can just get a sense of who else here to support? Thank you for what you bring to our students. You're so valuable and appreciated. And I know I see Tom Fleece, who used to be our Arts Director in District 11, so thank you for being here tonight, Tom.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report for this evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you for, all of you for being here, and hope you have a wonderful rest of the evening. Moving on, public comments. Melissa, do we have public comments? Okay, going over the public comments board protocol, most of you are aware of it. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. Clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that. Please monitor the clock and restrict your comment to three minutes. A reminder that the board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. As highlighted in our board priorities, the board is very interested in building trust and transparency by listening to community feedback as it helps perform better for, perform our work. The clear expectation is that this feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to personal attacks and disparaging remarks. So please be respectful of everyone in the audience, board members, staff, and audience, and maintain the expected professional decorum in the boardroom. If you want to show support for a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board of the district. With that, the first comment, it's actually by two students, so since they are coming collectively together, you guys get five minutes. Riley Brown and Elena Burtman. Riley Brown and Elena Burtman. And they are from Coronado High School, from what I see up here. Thank you.
I am Riley Brown, a senior at Coronado High School and member of First Robotics Competition Team 2996, Cougars Gone Wired. I lead our community outreach and scouting sub-teams, and I've been a member of a team for three years.
And I'm Eleana Burtman, also a senior at Coronado and a member of Cougars Gone Wired. I'm part of the outreach and programming sub-teams, and this is my first year on the team.
FRC Team 2996, Cougars Gone Wired, is D11's First Robotics Team based out of Coronado High School. We compete at a national level with teams from around the world and have been recognized six times throughout our team's history for a strong impact we make on our community with outreach events, summer camps, and volunteer work.
Cougars Gone Wired participates in the International Robotics Competition known as FIRST. Students from the elementary, middle, and high school level compete with thousands of teams from around the world in a yearly robotics competition which inspires students to pursue careers in STEM. Participants gain valuable real-world skills that can be applicable to future careers and are provided hands-on experiences in engineering, allowing students to apply what is being learned in the classroom. Participation in FIRST, or any robotics program for that matter, is not cheap, and it is hard to launch and maintain robotics programs without the proper support of their school district or local sponsors.
Colorado Sense for STEM is an initiative founded by Cougars Gone Wired in April of 2023 and is a coalition of First Robotics Competition Teams from across Colorado. Our purpose is to advocate for state-level grant funding for STEM extracurriculars such as FIRST. We are inspired by a Washington-based FIRST team who sought to encourage and support other FRC teams in passing legislation in their own states.
Our initiative has two main objectives. The first is to pass a bill that will establish a state-level grant fund for extracurricular K-12 STEM programs, focusing on creating new teams and sustaining those that are financially struggling. This would increase accessibility to STEM programs by reducing the financial burden placed on schools to fund the programs, allowing for more opportunities for students to participate in STEM-based activities. Our second objective is more local. The creation of a district-wide guaranteed high school post-secondary workforce credit readiness, PWR, credit for participation in robotics, earned after four years of FRC level participation. This would recognize the educational importance and real-world career experience that participation in robotics provides.
Participation in FIRST increases the chances of students going into STEM later in life. A study from Brandeis University shows that participation in FIRST leads students to be three to six times more likely to pursue a career in STEM. Robotics allows students who are hoping to pursue a career in STEM to have the opportunity to apply in learning what they are engineering, what they are learning in engineering and math classes in a situation that is reflective of current STEM fields. Broadly, the state grant program would increase participation and interest in STEM programs, and the credit program would achieve this at the D11 level, both expanding STEM education as a whole. People who are focused on STEM fields are in high demand as we move into a future powered by technology, AI, and engineering.
As we proceed, we would like to have the board's support. Not only are you integral to the creation of a district-wide PWR credit for participation in robotics, you're also part of the D11 community, a community that we want to have in our corner as we move forward in our mission to advocate for state-level grant funding for STEM extracurriculars.
We want to give a thank you to all the people who helped us along the way. Our excellent robotics coach, Mr. McLean, our principal, Ms. Arnell, and the Superintendent of Westside Schools, Mr. Smith, for helping us get before you today. And you, the school board, for your time and continued support of our robotics team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please, hold your applause. Hold your applause, please, no applause. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. Please, pass it to, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Moving on, the next citizen comment is from, it's about a non-action item that's on the board agenda today, Policy JH, and it's Mr. Lyman Kaiser. Lyman Kaiser.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to postpone my comments to a later date, but these two were really great, and you need to do what they said.
That was short and succinct, thank you. Okay, Ms. Janine Russell.
Good evening, my name is Janine Russell. I'm the Director of Food and Nutrition Services for District 11. Thank you, Mr. President Malpakam, and board members, and Mr. Gall for allowing me the opportunity to tell you about Colorado Proud Day, which is actually next Tuesday, October 3rd. Food and Nutrition Services is proud to be able to support our local farmers and ranchers on this day. Our menu for student enjoyment will include product from Mount Freshies, a local co-op of farmers. They will be supplying us that day with a cane and Honeycrisp apples, Bartlett pears, mixed-colored grape tomatoes, carrots, mixed salad greens. We will also be serving Tuesday beef nachos. The beef will be coming from Ranch Foods Direct, and the chips will actually be coming from Rancholitas in Denver. They make their chips from local corn from farmers. Please stop by an elementary next Tuesday and enjoy the menu. I've provided each one of you an invitation, so we would enjoy having you there at our schools. In addition, over the next few weeks, our students will be enjoying a lot of local farm products that will include Palisade peaches, which you had at the last work session meeting. We will be serving Asian pears, something students don't have an opportunity to enjoy, Italian plums, mixed-colored bell peppers, raspberries, blackberries. We are fortunate enough to be able to feature these more expensive produce items due to a local school food grant that we have received. Also, as a parting gesture, I would like to remind you of the National School Lunch Program next October through the 13th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last public comment is from Chris Wallace. Mr. Wallace.
My name is Chris Wallace. I'm a D11, I'm a community member, a D11 parent, and a former school board director. I stand today in opposition to actions taken by some board members to contract an outside communications firm in an attempt to launder its own reputation for which it has so rightfully earned. As I understand it, a select few members of this board worked with Michael Gall to hire SOT for $40,000 for three months of work. While this may be operating within the specifics of the law, it certainly has the appearance of being ethically dubious when one scratches beneath the surface. First, the firm allegedly has ties to politically, political operatives and a specific political agenda. As board members, your commitment to Students First and politics never should be unquestionable and beyond reproach. As far as I can tell, this five-month-old organization doesn't even have a website and the business address is a, is a residential home. Hiring these allegedly partisan agents clearly belies your true intent. The idea that my tax dollars are being used to craft the soapbox for this board to campaign from is shocking. Secondly, the specific period for which this firm was hired to do their work and the fact that it perfectly aligns with the election cycle for which the board president and the vice president are facing reelection is a clear indicator that this effort is not about promoting our school district but about promoting a partisan school board. Again, while this likely operates within the margins of technicality, it clearly lacks the spirit of integrity that I know we expect from our students and staff. Third, D11 already has a fully-staffed communications department that is more than capable of promoting the district in a positive, ethical, and nonpartisan manner. The idea that the district has so much extra money that they are able to pay for allegedly political operatives for their own self-promotion instead of investing those dollars in our students and teachers in the form of school supplies, recognition, or literally anything else is appalling. Lastly, real excellence speaks for itself. When a public service is truly excellent, its users don't need to be told how great it is. They already know. The board needs to fulfill its promise to keep dollars close to the classroom and truly, wholeheartedly, and holistically pursue outcomes, not appearances, impact, not image, results, not reputation. The board should not waste its time congratulating itself when the praise for performance should be placed solely at the feet of its incredible students and staff. I ask that this board immediately terminate the contract and return to established norms of working with the in-house communications department. $40,000 can buy a lot of pencil erasers, but even that isn't enough to erase the mistakes of this board. This community has not forgotten that this board and president refused to take actions when one of its directors threatened violence against a community member, or when this board sought to further alienate our LGBTQ youth with, with discriminatory policies, or sought to actively turn a blind eye to our students' well-being and mental health by changing the opt-out standard to the Healthy Kids surveys against the advice of elected medical professionals in this community. This community has not forgotten. I sincerely hope they turn out to vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all we have for public comments and thank you for being here and sharing your thoughts. And the board appreciates hearing from you. If you check the box asking a district administration to contact you, someone from administration will follow up and contact you. With that, moving on. Okay, I can pass that on. Board member reports. Who would like to go first? Oh, I see Director Loma.
Well, again, you know, when I seen the kids earlier, it, it makes me feel like I'm gonna miss this when I'm gone, right? But things like that happened today, when you have people come up here. I think this is the same Chris Wallace who, who lost the election and came back up and attacked all of us. It's not like a sore loser. Is that the same guy? Yeah, I think it is. The person who attacked our decision to end masks, that's the same guy. The, the person who attacked us about, me actually, about coming against useless vaccines, saying that we didn't know what we're doing and, and that we were trying to bring politics in. Is that the same person who's bringing politics in right now? That's, that's surprising to me. It's, you know, he probably couldn't win a board election, but he should run for dog catcher. The person who voted to close our children's school during this pandemic, is that the same guy who's talking right now, who voted to close our schools to harm our children? I'm surprised that, and I'm also surprised that you're now carrying the, the water for the, for the NEA, for the union. You make a good water boy. The NEA, you know, who supports trans, changing our boys to girls and girls to boys, that's, that's the one you're carrying the water for? The NEA who, who, who closed schools for profit during the pandemic? So, when I hear you talking and attacking two fine gentlemen who are running for reelection, it's kind of, not surprised. You know, sore losers do that. So, I just thought that would share that because I kind of felt like I needed to.
Director Bankus.
Thank you. Part of the piece of giving board reports is to really talk about what's going on in the district from the board perspective. And with this board, we have, since I've been on it for two years, have said that we will go into schools. We each have at least eight schools that we visit. We've committed to visit. We visit others, but we have a commitment to visit the eight schools. In addition to that, we have an opportunity to reach out into our community. So, since the last board meeting with the, within the last two weeks, I had an opportunity to attend, get to meet our new Special Populations Director, Deidre Sheer, and was able to hear what we're doing as far as our special needs kids, providing programs, hiring people, supporting people, making sure that we're reaching out to our military families who are coming here with their children to keep their children moving in a direction that makes the next move to a new high school or a new elementary or middle school, a smooth transition. I visited both Keller and Columbia sites. I was appreciative of Columbia that celebrated their 125th anniversary of being a school in a local community. That was just wonderful. And if I was better with the computer, thank you, Melissa tried to help me, I would be able to show you three ladies who attended Columbia Elementary School when they were in fourth and fifth grade. Actually, they went all the way through. But on the slideshow, it showed them at eight or nine years old. It was, no, no, not yet, not yet. Not yet. That's something different. It's coming. So, able to meet those three folks and what a wonderful community that is. Parents live there, grandparents live there, great-grandparents live there. The arts piece in Columbia is, is just wonderful, seeing all of the opportunities that the kids are given in order to, as we heard earlier, express themselves in more than one way. We also were invited, and I attended, along with other members of the board, the Downtown Partnership, to hear about the plans for creating a vibrant downtown or to continue the development of downtown from which we are a tax-based organization. It's with the health, the economic health of our city that funds our education, plus the voters who will give us and support us through their voting record, whether we're asking for a bond or a mail levy or whatever. And finding out so many businesses are so willing to invest in District 11, giving us what we need in order to provide for our students and our teachers. It's already been mentioned that we were at the arts kickoff at Gary Berry Stadium. It's the first time having kids growing up and going through Dougherty High School and a grandchild as well. It's the first time I've ever seen the, the marching band also dancing. It's like the tableaus that you saw. It was, it was really good. And if you haven't seen them yet, it's something to look forward to. I think you'll really enjoy it. Also had an opportunity to, to attend the Flight 2023 Rotary Club Live Auction where they auction off the butterflies. And if you were here a couple of weeks ago, you know that the Rotary Club Downtown, I think it is, yeah, the Rotary Club Downtown turns around and invests that money in District 11 and they brought us a check two weeks ago for $40,000. It was lovely. And I want to thank my fellow board member who, he and his wife contributed to that auction by purchasing two. Thank you so much. It also, it also goes to show the partnership and the creative and positive way in which we are reaching out to our community. The last thing that I attended was the Friends of the Children Dinner. And you may remember that Mr. Gall had worked with the Friends of the Children to create a space for which they pay rent at Swaggart Middle School. We were highly recognized last, the night, the other night, for the opportunity to provide a location that was more closely aligned with the families that they serve. And so, Friends of the Children have created an organization that takes in children that are referred to them through social services, pediatrics, and other community outreach people, and provide a mentor for their children from the ages of two to five. That's the, the window during which children are recommended for this program. And to hear the young mom get up and talk about how as a single mom, she is now able to hold on to her job because when her little guy, who is five years old and attends one of our schools, gets sick or needs to be picked up early or she has to work late, the mentor is there to supro, to support her and make sure she doesn't have to worry about childcare. When there are other people in the family, that mentor also makes sure that there's resources that reaches out to not only support the parent, but the other children in the, in the home as well. What a wonderful opportunity we have in order for us that we are able to find so many ways to help our students. And that, all of us here on this board and the ones who ran before, all have an idea of how we need to support our kids and give them the skills they need in order to be independent citizens and contributing to the community in which we live. I want to thank all of you who participate actively in our schools. I thank my colleagues for participating and giving their time and energy. And I appreciate the people who come in and give their public comments because your comments are taken to heart and we want to make sure that we are listening. Listening does not, if we are not acting in a way that is a result of what the input that you've given, it's not that we're not listening. We are listening. And we have created with our leadership our priorities. And how we interpret those is the direction in which we're going and we see the successes that are happening. When you get an elementary school that has increased their population by 100 in one year, that's phenomenal. I'm a former principal. If I had gotten an extra 100 kids in my school, it would have been amazing. I was happy to get 25 and 30 extra kids at the end of the year. It's truly amazing the things that are happening here and thank all of you, all of you for your interest and your input. Thank you.
Thank you. You didn't show your pictures. Is that okay?
Oh, how could I have forgotten? Yes, would you, so the 20th, yes, just pull up one of those. I only have two. Oh, how could I have forgotten this? Wait, give me a microphone. So, what you're looking at, I belong to a literacy group. And what you're looking at is a mini-conference that we hold every fall. Harvesting a golden crop of literacy was the theme this year. And the picture on the left is only District 11 teachers, learning coaches, who came on their Saturday morning to find new inroads, new strategies in order to better serve their kids. And the bottom right is our math facilitator, Paul Bungie. I think I'm saying his name correctly. And you might ask, what's a math person doing at a literacy conference? It's because there's an overlay in how we plan and strategize and be intentional about what we teach and when we teach it. Next slide, please. This is the 25th anniversary over at Scott Elementary. And I'm especially proud to talk about Dr. Howard, who is well-remembered. And you know, there was a lot of conversation about dedicating a library to him. And here he is at the 25th anniversary. He is well-remembered, well-respected. And I have to say, has a special place in my heart because when I retired, he hired me. And so, I worked for him. The teacher on the right is Ramona Beckman. She's a kindergarten teacher who has been a stalwart of that school. And if I can find my note, I will tell you the names of.
I can tell you the names. You want me to?
Yeah, you read the names.
Ms. Karen Crowe, Ms. Susan Strasic, Ms. Jennifer Gonzalez, and Ms. Mann in the front.
And you will see that they are wearing the jackets that were presented to them because they have been at Scott Elementary School ever since the school opened. You talk about folks invested in our schools, people who graduate from our schools and then come back to our schools to continue to contribute. Speaks well of our reputation and the direction in which we're going. I think that takes care of my pictures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Director Daniels.
Thank you. Everyone, Fall Festival is on Saturday, 2 to 5, at Martinez. Don't forget. Was on my to-do list. Wanted to make sure I share that. Also, the kickoff at Gary Berry with Dougherty's marching band performing their Bob Ross expression. The artist with them was amazing. I think Laura Lee says she has plans to get Mitchell as well as Palmer involved next year. So, it's gonna be bigger and better, greater, I should say, not better, but it was great. I wish all of you could have been there to see it. Also, Dougherty's band and maybe Palmer will be participating in competitions this weekend. So, they're going up to Denver. It's gonna be a long day. I just want everyone to send well wishes towards them and anyone that can help on pit crew, they need volunteers. Let's get that going for them. Also, our D11 Special Education Advisory Council is having their, it's a D49, D20, as well as D11 combo for any type of conversation regarding special needs. So, everyone is pitching in to offer vendors and a fun event for parents to come and learn more about those services in the district as well as in the community. And it's gonna be from 10 to 2 at Skyview Middle School. So, parents, teachers, if you're listening, they will be all in one place Saturday, the 30th, if you can get there and just help with more information to dispense. And also wanted to share about attending the Colorado School Finance Project Conference. It was amazing to learn what's happening in legislative updates regarding the finance formula and how they're working on building another opportunity to work that out because of the BS factor now starting to shift. And also just to know that they are also as a whole, as Colorado, as a whole, is working on a committee task force members to start getting data from around the state to help with understanding where the funds are going, what the funds are doing, if we need more, if we need less. So, it's gonna be a really great project happening for the next year. And there's a ton of other things we discuss. Esr funds that are no longer gonna be available next year in '24 and what that looks like, what are we gonna do, how it's gonna pan out, all of those great things. So, yeah, it was wonderful to attend that and looking forward to doing more with different committees that share and offer bigger conversations of what we're having. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Art, has her hand up? Director Art.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to make a note that as we are celebrating District 11, in District 11, the arts with our Arts Month resolution, there are resources in the community as well. And folks can check out artsoctober.com. So, that's art plural, artsoctober.com. Thanks.
Director Nelson.
So, on our agenda later in the meeting will be a discussion around SMART goals for the district. SMART stands for Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Results-Focused, and Time-Bound. In the spring of 22, 2022, the board agreed to the priorities hanging behind us of student success, staff investment, community engagement, and building on a future vision of the district. These priorities had extensive detail under each category to guide our work. The superintendent also just developed specific goals in his performance report to hold himself accountable leading the district. So, these SMART goals have been developed based on all of this prior work and will help bring focus to a higher level. So, we're not so detailed and in the weeds. This is about, this isn't about the board's work or the superintendent's work solely, but a way to unite the district towards shared targets. We are a team. The board, staff, parents, and community members working together to the benefit of our students. The board has spent an extensive amount of time investing on our staff through improved health benefits, record-setting pay raises, increased professional development opportunities, and raising starting salaries in both ESP positions as well as an increase of $8,000. positions as well as an increase of eight thousand dollars to land teachers at fifty thousand dollar starting salary. We are taking care of our staff. The Safety SMART goal will continue this priority while the literacy, free and reduced lunch, school accreditation will elevate our focus on student outcomes, the goals that we'll be discussing later. Schools exist to educate students, equipping them with the skills necessary to someday support themselves, their families, and be an informed and engaged citizen. In the spirit of teamwork, I ask that parents and community members attend our DAC meeting tomorrow night. There will be a training for SAC, School Accountability Committees, to learn how they can support their schools. Especially as we enter into student-based budgeting over the next couple of years, having involved families will help guide and shape the direction of schools through the budget as well as academic performance reviews. The training is from six to eight at the Tesla Professional Development Building at twenty-five sixty International Circle. We are a team and it's going to take all of us working together to continue to improve the outcomes for all kids in District eleven. Thanks.
Director Jorgensen.
Good evening, everybody. I am sharing a few happenings that I was able to attend, one being the ribbon cutting ceremony at Coronado, which I'm sure Parth has some pictures of, as well as the Coronado West Side Parade on Saturday, the sixteenth, which was my first time going to that. And it was, I mean, talk about a big parade for the west side. That was really, really neat and something special for that west side community. So that was great. As as Director Bankus mentioned, we did get two of those things because my wife liked one and I liked one and so.
You're talking about butterflies.
The butterflies, if you're seeing them around town. But yeah, so she had to have hers and I had to have mine, I guess. So there you go. And then the Mitchell, I was noticing on our social media that Mitchell's been like winning a lot of different things in their in their athletics lately. So I wanted to say kudos to the Mitchell athletics that are sweeping. I saw Sierra the other night and a couple of other in-town teams. So kudos to them. And then lastly, the response to the comment tonight, I would just say I don't know what the name of that company even is that Mr. Gall chose to work with, nor what they're even working on for Mr. Gall. And so you're welcome to Cora request any of my emails. I have no idea what you're what you're referring to or accusing me of. And unfortunately, that's that's where I'll leave that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll wrap up my board member reports. I think a lot of the community events that I attended, other board members attended. So the pictures that I'm sharing, I'm going to show the pictures, but I'm going to not talk too much about them because you guys have already done an amazing job talking about that. The first one is the Scott, the anniversary celebrations that are happening in two schools. Scott celebrated its twenty-fifth anniversary. Columbia celebrated its hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. How cool is that? And I think the previous Columbia principal is sitting at the back out there. So he knows the tradition that happens at Columbia. So I was fortunate enough to attend both of those. Both schools had a time capsule that they buried out there. There is one that's a big hole that's been dug out there and hopefully in twenty-five years' time or fifty years' time, a hundred and fifty years' time, I don't know when they're going to open that time capsule. People will get an opportunity to look back in time and see what the community was at that point in time. My takeaway from both these community events was the community that came into that event. Both Scott and Columbia, it was well attended by the community out there. There is a thirst in the community to come back into our schools after all the shutdown that happened during the pandemic. Our community wants to come back into our schools. Seeing the North kids right out there in front of Columbia having that performance and the community sitting out there and listening to the music. There was even a cop car that pulled up there and I don't know what he was doing, but he stood out there for five minutes listening to the students perform. So it was wonderful to see both those schools perform. You can go to the, and both are excellent schools, by the way. We promote excellence and both, oh, there you go. Both schools are promoting excellence. Twenty-five years of excellence, hundred and twenty-five years of excellence in the other school. You talked about the Coronado High School celebrations and it was great participating in the parade out there, the enthusiasm out in the community and also for the ribbon cutting ceremony. Just look at that picture of the track and field. That's spectacular out there and we are going to be doing the same ribbon cutting ceremony at Doherty, I think, next week. And this board has put a stake in the ground and said that academics comes first, but we are still providing the supports and resources out there. That was a two million dollar investment, if I remember right, in each one of those schools. So our student athletes now have state-of-the-art facilities to come and participate. A lot of the, I read some of the public comments that was there on our social media pages and also talked to some other people. They said it's high time that we did this and this board responded without even, you know, and supported by providing the resources to have this state-of-the-art facilities. And the next thing that's on, and we've already put that to Superintendent Gall out there, is to have bleachers that go along with that facility. So parents can now sit and enjoy a football game at their home stadium, at Coronado's home stadium and Doherty's home stadium. So it was good to have some board directors out there too participating in that. You talked already about the partnership breakfast, I mean, the wings and the season of wings. These are our teachers, Ms. Michelle Arthur from McAuliffe, no, no, not McAuliffe, from Swigert, Swigert Middle School, Swigert Middle School. And that is the piece, I think Director Jorgensen ended up purchasing. Yeah, that's the far-left corner up there. Ms. Arthur painted that piece. And then there was a teacher from Madison, Ms. Lisa Black. And her daughter, Rebecca Black, painted the other one that's in the teal and the black color out there. So it was a wonderful event to attend and it generated quite a bit of dollars, the money, the donations that came up through this auction that is going to end up coming back to our schools for supporting STEM programs. Already talked about Anika Norman, who's still out here after several of the people have, I think she's getting tired by this time, but she had a delightful conversation with us. I am always pleasantly surprised when students, and it was just Superintendent Gall and myself having that conversation over breakfast yesterday, and Anika held the conversation really well. She commented on cell phone policies and her thoughts on it. And I'm amazed because at her age, I would never be able to hold that type of that type of conversation. So to see the confidence in our kids and thriving in that environment, kudos to you and best wishes. And then we were there at the downtown partnership breakfast event too. This is about talking about the downtown revival. Director Bankus was there and our CTE team was there. And I also got to be with the Urban Renewal Authority team, which talks about blighted areas downtown. And if you talk about the revival that's happening downtown, it's all wonderful things that are happening out there. So it was good to have Scott Mendelsburg, Dwayne Roberson, and the CTE team out there too, talking about our student programs that they have where they partner with our businesses to bring CTE programs into the district. And Jeriah Walker, who was the executive director of the of the Urban Renewal Authority, got recognized with the downtown star of the downtown star, one of the downtown stars out there. There were three of them that was recognized out there, Director Bankus and Jeriah Walker, who's right in the middle and I get to work with them in the URA. I am proud that he got recognized out there. And upcoming events that I do want to talk about, I already talked about the Doherty Field that is going to open up in, I think, next week. And the Doherty Auditorium, another budget that the board allocated and that went to renovating the Doherty Auditorium. And at the beginning of the board event, we had the Doherty Dance Students celebrated. Now they have a stage where they can perform without having to be a hazard, which it was all this time. So I am proud that we were able to support that event too. Tomorrow, Scott is going to open their new facility. So I look forward to being there and being part of that celebration. Board members, you can be there. October second is Count Day. Please, to the parents who are listening out there, please send your kids back. Send your kids to school that day. Every day matters. And City Serve Day is October sixth and seventh. This is a wonderful program put together by CASI Love You. So if you are a parent volunteer, please, if you have time, partner with some of our local churches, partner with some of our other community organizations that are out there. And please do come and renovate. The Martinez principal talked about how that was a well-attended event. I'm going to end with this. This was something that was shared to me by District twenty parent recently. Okay. And maybe this was a mailer that went out to a District twenty parent out there. Okay. And this talks about the comparison of District twenty schools or District eleven schools with District twenty and District forty-nine schools. And this parent came and said that this is, this type of communication marketing has never bent across the border to another school district. And this time we did. So I was talking to Superintendent Gall about it. It compares what D eleven offers in terms of programs and opportunities compared to District twenty and District forty-nine. Okay. And you can see the check mark out there in the green as to all the things that we offer compared to what D forty-nine and D twenty offers. It has always been a sticking point for me that I live in District eleven and I get mailers from District twenty wanting to attract our students to District eleven, District twenty, and District forty-nine. First time we are being proactive in our marketing and going to other school districts. When the Martinez principal comes and talks about enrollment has gone up by hundred students, how much is this difference going to, these type of communications is making? Hundred students results in almost a million dollars, a million dollars of extra revenue into that school district. Okay. So if we invest forty thousand dollars on communication, forty thousand dollars on marketing, it's well-spent. Okay. Because the return on the investment is hundredfold sometimes because of the number of students that come into our school district. Our board communication, board operating manual even says that one of our priorities is communication with the public. And I read this from the board operating manual, the board is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping the local citizenry informed about the schools. That's board communication. We have done that diligently the last year and a half. The board has sent out periodic board communications every couple of months informing about all the good things that are happening. But we need to do more of it. Okay. We got to be standing on top of Pike's Peak and shouting our excellence because in this day and age, we got to market ourselves. We can't, you know, four thousand students left the schools in four years. For the first time, we are talking about enrollment numbers going up and that's going to benefit our students and are going to benefit our teachers in terms of staff compensation. So we have so many amazing things going on and this is no way to supplant what our communication team is doing. I want to be loud and clear and I want our communication team to hear this. They are doing an amazing job. Okay. But they are lean sometimes and short-staffed. So to augment the word, augment the work that they do, we have a plethora of outside services sometimes to support what they are doing. And that has got us the increased enrollment where we are right now. So with that, we will continue to do what is right for our students, staff, and schools. Moving on. Consent items, adoption of consent items. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E two, approval of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. E three, approval of personnel recommendation, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. E four, approval of resolution twenty-four, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four dash oh five Arts Month. E five, approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven National School Lunch Week, October ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. E six, adoption of policy EJ, animals in buildings. And E seven, adoption of policy series JR, student records and student data privacy.
Moved and seconded at rule call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye. That's backwards. That's the wrong order.
The ayes have it. So the consent items have been adopted. Moving on to the action items. The first action item is contract award for the bond council service. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item F one?
I move that the Board of Education approves contract C, twenty twenty-four dash ten oh nine, award to Butler Snow LLC for bound bond council services.
Second. Moved and seconded Superintendent Gall. This is new information. Chief order? Chief order.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Gall.
You're on.
Check, check. All right. Good deal. So tonight I am bringing to you two individual contract awards for your approval. Both are required in support of a potential issuance of certificates of participation or COP, public sales issuance. The first contract is with Butler Snow LLC for bond tax and disclosure council to the district in connection with the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and the issuance of related certificates of participation to finance improvements and upgrades to various district facilities. The second contract is for the underwriting services and financial consulting through RBC Capital Markets. Both presentations will have some overlap. Neither contract is seeking the board's approval to issue COPs. With us tonight virtually is Ms. Kim Crawford Esquire, Butler Snow LLC. And she will be able to answer any questions, any legal questions pertaining to the public sales issuance you might have. Before I discuss, though, the scope of the contract and its process, I'd like to update the viewing audience on what is driving the conversation for a COP and contracts that I am bringing to you tonight. If the community is not aware, the district is currently under contract with Perkins Eastman through a competitive contract process, which is a nationally recognized engineering and architectural firm to design an academic support plan or ASP. It will identify capital improvements to students' learning environments. Their primary deliverable to the district is to develop a list of improvements that we ask them to categorize in three main areas. The first are smaller projects that could be done within the MLO capital program budget. The second are medium-sized projects that could be done within a COP or certificate of participation. And the third are large transformational projects that would require a voter-approved funding mechanism such as a bond or MLO. To wrap up the ASP development, Perkins Eastman has been facilitating several iterations of community outreach, most recently in early September, to gather community input on the proposed concepts that fit into the medium funding category or the COP category. It's also noteworthy to state the school districts in the state of Colorado are not funded by state dollars to replace or build additional capital needs, therefore placing the funding need on the local communities to pass voter-approved tax bonds or mill levies. Certificates of participation are a funding mechanism that does not require voter approval in accordance with Colorado Constitution. This contract that I'm bringing to you tonight is a requirement for professional legal services and under Colorado statute, professional services can and should be evaluated based on qualifications and experience coupled with recent. based on qualifications and experience coupled with recent and relevant past performance, then-negotiated price and scope. Market research within the state reflects few law firms that provide this niche legal service. Butler Snow LLP has been deemed as a highly qualified and experienced legal firm that provides this service. The primary attorneys within Butler Snow are well-known and respected in this field around the state and are used at several other districts. The attorneys in Butler Snow and Kim Crawford in particular routinely work with school districts with the execution and delivery of Certificates of Participation. Most recently, the firm has worked with Mapleton Schools, Denver Public Schools, Cherry Creek, Aurora, Adams 12, Mesa County Valley, Eagle County, and many others, as well as D11 in our last COP issuance in 2016. As part of their contract performance, Butler Snow LLP will draft the resolution that the Board, for the Board's approval, and will examine applicable law. They will consult with the district and RBC for the issuance of certificates. They will prepare customary documents and undertake other additional duties to ensure compliance with tax laws, both federal and state. Based upon identified underwriting service scope of work and the terms, structure, size, and schedule of the financing, the contract's estimated fee will be $85,000. This fee is paid out of the public issuance financial transaction. There is no financial obligation to the district's existing budget. If the district board decided not to pursue issuing COPs, there is no financial obligation and no fees paid to the law firm. Before I turn it back over to the Board for any questions you might have for Kim Crawford, Dr. Comfort, or myself, I'd like to ask Kim Crawford, who's on the WebEx, to give a brief overview of how she is able to help the Board as we move forward through this process. Ms. Crawford, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with the Board. And as Ms. Odom described, certificates of participation are very common with school districts as well as other cities and towns and counties and other governmental entities in Colorado. A majority of the larger school districts, again, as Ms. Odom mentioned, have issued certificates of participation. It's a very common funding formula to meet capital needs. The only way that school districts can provide capital for their, for their school district needs is through either bonds, general obligation bonds, or certificates of participation. As you all know, bonds require an election. Elections are only held in November. So certificates of participation are a pretty common financing tool that allow you more flexibility in meeting your capital needs when, when you need them instead of having to plan around an election every year or whenever you wanted to have an election. So the downside with that, with COPs, is that you do have to have general fund money or other available money to make those payments because under a general obligation bond, as you know, although you have paid off all of your general obligation bonds, but you impose a property tax. For certificates of participation, you only pay from whatever district revenues are available. So again, these are, these are a very common financing source for school districts in particular. And I, we've done, we've done a great deal of those in Colorado as well as, we've done several of these for District 11 in the past. I have worked with District 11 since about probably 2003. So I'm familiar with what's been going on in the district and, and some of your, what you've done with elections and other types of financing improvements that you've done. So Ms. Odom, is there anything else you'd like me to address? Or does the Board have any questions for me?
I don't have anything. I turn it over to the Board for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for also joining us remotely. Board, comments or questions before I call for Treasurer Nelson?
I just want clarification that these services are for the creation of the COP and all of the processes. But should we decide to go, or should future Boards decide to go for a bond, say in like three years, and part of that bond was paying off the COP earlier? Would we then need to extend a contract for additional legal services at that time? Or does this contract follow through the life of the loan?
That's a great question. I'm going to attempt to answer that. And then, Kim, if you need to add to that, please, please follow. This contract is for this transaction only. If a future Board decides to go for a future bond or mill levy, we would do the same thing. We need bond, counsel, and more than likely, underwriting services as well.
Okay, and then I'm just going to ask it while I have the mic. On the next contract, they speak to, in their, in the documents, that underwriting company needing legal counsel? And so that's separate from what this is?
Yes, that's correct. It's a separate legal counsel.
It's for their organization and not for us?
We'll ask Dan O'Connell, who's also attending virtually, to explain that if it's possible to wait for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I appreciate that consideration.
That was all I had. Thanks.
Ms. Odom, can I add one more thing? Not necessarily to this question, but, but again, just procedural-wise, you are correct that this, this engagement letter is only for this transaction. And if you decided to do a bond in the future and to pay off these certificates, which you can with bond proceeds, you would do that under a separate engagement. But what the Board would, would or could consider within the next month or, or whenever you deem it as appropriate is, your first step would really be to adopt a resolution. And a resolution is not before you tonight, but it would be before you probably, maybe, possibly sometime in October. And it would be a parameters resolution. So it would set maximum amounts, like a maximum principal amount, a maximum repayment cost, maximum interest rate, that the Board would, the Board and the district would work, work through in order to issue these certificates. But it would allow you some flexibility to have already adopted that resolution. It would allow you flexibility to, to designate this for just capital improvements of, of the district so you could take more time in determining exactly what your improvements are going to be and what your project scope is going to be. But for a parameters resolution, you would just need to know what your maximum amounts would be. And Dan O'Connell, who will speak next, would help you make those determinations based on what you think your project costs are. That might be more information than you want for tonight.
Director Nelson?
Thank you. No, I, I'm a detailed person. It frustrates my Board member colleagues sometimes. But I appreciate that kind of timeline and then the process involved. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions from the Board. Thank you for the detailed explanation. I don't have any questions. I think it was easy enough to follow through. So just to summarize this, this is approving a contract with Butler Snow for the Bond Counsel Services. If the, if the Board decides not to go through with that, there is no charge on the, for the, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Director Bankus? Yeah.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott? Director?
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So the contract award is being approved. Moving on to the second item, again, a contract award underwriting services for Certificate of Participation. And let me see. Is it Director Nelson? Director Nelson, can you please read the motion for action item F2?
I move that the Board of Education approves Contract C 2024-1005, Award to RBC Capital Market, RBCCM, for underwriting services.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is again a new item. Back to you. Chief Odom.
Thank you, President Malpackham. This particular contract with RBC Capital Markets, or RBC, is an investment agreement that officially authorizes RBC to advise the Board of Education on financial matters pertaining to certificates of participations or COPs. This contract is not seeking your approval to issue COPs. Rather, it will provide such services as recommendations on sizing, structure of the COPs, the term of the COP, and the annual payments and early payoff options. With us tonight virtually is Mr. Dan O'Connell, Managing Director, RBC Capital Markets. And he will be able to answer any technical, financial, or COP questions you might have. As previously presented, the need for a COP is being driven by the development of the Academic Support Plan through Perkins Eastman. And school districts in the state of Colorado are not funded by state dollars to replace or build additional capital needs, but rely on local communities to pass voter-approved tax bonds or mill levies. Once again, certificates of participation, or COPs, are a funding mechanism that does not require voter approval in accordance with Colorado Constitution. There are primarily two ways a COP can be funded. One is a lease purchase bank placement, and the other is a public issuance of certificates. The bank placement method is more common with smaller transactions. In a bank placement, RBC would act as a placement agent and order a place to lease with a bank to offer the best terms for the district. We use this method to fund the Adams renovation, along with Roosevelt Charter Academy and Academy for Advanced and Creative Learning a few years ago. The public sales event relies on the underwriting to issue certificates for public purchase. This method is used on larger transactions and also takes into consideration market rates. In today's market with the size of a projected issuance, a public sale of COPs will provide the lowest borrowing cost. The last issuance of COPs by the district was in 2009. As the Board continues to evaluate how they want to program the COPs through the proposed academic master plan visions, there will be a need to consult with underwriting services for financial guidance. Procurement issued a solicitation seeking underwriting services at an estimated term of 25 years. That's how long we're going to take to pay it back. And in a amount ranging from 120 to 145 million, with annual payments coming from the capital MLO allocation. The district received three responsive, responsible proposals, and RBC Market, Capital Market was deemed as the overall best value firm at the lowest purchase price. Just to give you a comparison of what it costs to issue for a public issuance versus a private placement, at 120 to 145 million, a public issuance is about, using about $3.31 per 1,000, it's approximately 4.35% interest rate. If you use a bank lease purchment, purchase, excuse me, method, the interest rate can range anywhere from 5% to 5.5%. Just to give you something to compare. If the Board approves this contract tonight, we will bring RBC back in the October 18th work session to discuss financial structure of COPs and options for the Board to consider. And then if the Board wants to move forward in the November-December timeframe, we could do non-action, action votes. This type of resolution would require a two-pass vote. Finally, if the Board decides not to approve the COPs, then there is no financial obligation to the underwriting firm, and they are paid, they are paid out of public sales issuance. So if you decide to approve it, they're paid out of the transaction. If you decide not to do it, there's no financial obligation on the district, and there's no impact to the budget. At this time, I would like to ask Dan O'Connell to provide a brief overview of how a public issuance works, and then turn it back over to the Board for any questions you might have. Mr. O'Connell, are you present?
I am present. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for having me. Apologies that I cannot be here in advance, but I had another conference that I had to attend, unfortunately. So certainly look forward to seeing the Board again in person in the future. Just to give you a bit of an overview, similar to Kim, I have worked with the district for quite some time, since 2003, 2006 area, and have assisted in, whether it's the public sale of COPs or refunding of bonds, or acting as placement agent. I've had a long history with the district. So certainly appreciate the opportunity yet again. Just to give you an overview of what we would do, certainly we have a lot of experience in this area. And I've worked with Kim in assisting in the sizing and structure of the COPs, working with the district and district staff to make sure we allow for the most flexibility for the district and achieve the lowest interest cost for the district as well. We work closely with district and bond counsel to assist in the document preparation, as well as the financing timeline. And as Kim mentioned, we will also provide the financial parameters once we agree upon what the borrowing amount will be to include in the authorizing parameters resolution. On an ongoing basis, we'll provide market updates and ongoing advice and provide recommendations around the eventual pricing of the COPs, the closing and delivery of funds. And it is our job eventually to actually sell those COPs to investors and deliver the funds to the district. That's a bit of an overview of what our scope of work will be. And I'd love to answer the question if you wouldn't, if the Board member wouldn't mind repeating it. I think I may have missed a couple words. I just wanted clarity on that question.
Director Nelson?
So the previous contract was for legal counsel for the Board on this process. And then I noticed in your paperwork, it also speaks to needing legal counsel. And I assume that is going to be two separate things. You yourself are needing legal counsel, and that's not tied to what we are previously just voted on.
That is accurate. I will be requiring underwriters counsel. And that's different representation than Kim Crawford, which will be on counsel. So she will, she will be representing the district. I will have underwriters counsel, or RBC will have writers counsel. And that's paid out of, out of the fee as well that's already been presented in the RFP.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the Board? Again, to summarize, there is no financial obligation. Oh, you do. Director Bankus?
I'm sorry, Director Odom. When you were talking about the interest rates, the 3.5%, 3.45% interest rate, was that on a lease? Then that was similar to what you did for Adams? Would you clear that up for me?
Sure. So yes, it's a lease purchase agreement for the Adams transaction. It was a private placement lease. In layman's terms, it was a banking transaction.
Okay.
You go to the bank, you get, you lease like you would to get other funds, and it was at a lower interest rate. So back in 2009, I think is when we did, or sorry, 2016, when we did Adams, the Adams renovation, I think it was at a much lower rate. Dan will probably remember more than I would. I want to say it was like under 2%.
Sure. We, if you don't mind, Chris, may I jump in? We actually, you know, rate doubled essentially over the course of the last couple of years. So we're dealing with a much different interest rate environment than we were in the past. And just to, to provide a little bit of clarity to that question. So once you get to a larger amount, I think the, I can't recall the exact amount of that transaction, but I think it was maybe 12, 14 million, somewhere around there. Once you get to an amount significantly higher than that, it becomes advantageous district, and you can, the borrowing cost, if you do a public sale. So that means RBC selling to investors on a larger scale as opposed to just issuing an RFP for banks and placing it with one bank. for banks and placing it with one bank. So that's kind of the, the measurement that you take in order to decide, okay, what can achieve the lowest interest cost for the district.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you. Again, no financial obligation to the district if the Board decides that we are not going to go through this route.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's fine. But we need to do this resolution at this point in time so the Board can have the options presented to them in the October meeting, which will help them make the decision, which will help the Board make the decision in November.
That's correct.
Perfect. Thank, thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion has been adopted. The last contract award that we have in front of us is Contract Award 2024-1003 HVAC and Air Condition Addition to Queen Palmer Elementary. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for Action Item F3?
I move that the Board of Education approves Contract C2024-1003 award to MTEC Mechanical Technologies for the replacement of the HVAC and air conditioning, air condition addition at Queen Palmer in the amount of $1,394,000, and allow an additional 10% cost increase for any approved contract modification without future Board of Education contract approval. The period of performance will begin May 22nd, 2024, with a final completion date of August 2nd, 2024.
Second. Moved and seconded. Again, new information. Chief Odom?
Jocelyn.
Okay, just double thanks.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall, and good evening, Board of Education. My name is Jocelyn Cupferman. I'm the contracting officer for this project. With us tonight is Mr. Bruce Newfeld from MTEC Mechanical Technologies. He's the general manager. And then Mr. James Warren, who is the Assistant Director of Facilities. He was the project manager for the design effort on this project. Also joining us is Ms. Rosa Garcia, Executive Director of Procurement and Contracting, and Jennifer Hotelling, who is our capital program manager. So I would like to detail for you this HVAC project, as well as the design effort and solicitation evaluation process for the construction effort. First, let me explain what the contract requirement entails. Queen Palmer Elementary School has a building automation system that is outdated, not supported, has obsolete parts, and is difficult to maintain. The existing air handling equipment will be 25 years old at the time of replacement, and is starting to have regular and expensive breakdowns. Currently, the majority of this building has no air conditioning. The designed units will add air conditioning and maintain better ventilation for a healthy environment. This project replaces a total of 23 fan coils, 10 exhaust fans, seven unit vents, one air conditioner unit for the main distribution frame server room, one kitchen exhaust hood, one new makeup air unit, and 21 new air conditioning units completely cooling the school. This will also replace the current building automation system. In January of 2023, the Board of Education approved the use of the 2017 MLO monies to fund both the design and the construction of this HVAC project. In February of this year, we issued a design solicitation to replace the HVAC system and add the air conditioning for Queen Palmer. This design effort was awarded to Bridges and Paxton under competitive procedures. The period of performance for the design was April 1st, 2023 through July 17th, 2023. Once the design was complete, we issued a construction solicitation for the HVAC replacement and AC add. We received four responsive proposals. MTEC Mechanical Technologies was evaluated as the best value solution based on the overall thoroughness in their technical approach and project timeline, and their compliance with our standards and specifications. In addition, the team also evaluated all submitted proposals and their key personnel experience and qualifications, and their company's past performance and capabilities. MTEC's pricing for this project was also the lowest of all four submissions, making the best value determination an obvious choice. The construction schedule for this project will start May 22nd of 2024, with a substantial completion date on August 2nd, 2024. Demo work will start right away, followed by the installation of the controls, fan coils, air conditioning, and exhaust fans. Once the new units are installed, there will be a factory startup and functional testing of all units. Once substantial completion has met this, this formal testing and balancing will take place, followed by any remaining state and local final building inspections. Any identified punch list items will be finalized, such as warranty documentation and a final inspection to ensure all installation meets design requirements. This deadline for final completion is December 1st of 2024. There is a one-to-five-year warranty that covers all of the installed equipment and components, and labor is warranted for one year. All our standard construction contract terms and conditions apply to this project, which includes liquidated damages. Liquidated damages are not meant to be punitive, but rather to address any unforeseen delay caused by the contractor that would result in an interruption to the educational space during the school year. In this instance, the cost to the district to provide temporary classroom facilities would cost $1,500 a day. I would like to take a moment to add clarification to the motion for obtaining the additional 10% in the construction scope. This is not a budget approval request, rather a contract increase. This would allow us to address any unforeseen expenses that could arise within the construction period. It's not uncommon to have contractual increases on construction projects, and we do have this budget in place. This concludes my overview of the construction effort and the contract terms and conditions. Mr. James Warren and Mr. Bruce Newfeld are here to answer any specific technical questions you may have regarding this contract. At this time, I turn it over to the Board for any questions.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here too. Director Bankus.
I have a couple of questions. Is asbestos an issue when you're working with a building this old?
Yes, ma'am. In all of our buildings, that's always a concern. That's an unknown that we don't know exactly until we start getting into it. But that's part of our 10% that Jocelyn was talking about, to allow us for any of those unforeseen conditions, to allow those to be appropriately abated and removed from the building.
And we're responsible for that.
Yes. Yes, and we are responsible for that, not the contractor.
Oh, we, the district.
We take care of that.
Yes, ma'am.
The next question is the duck work, is that, does that need to be upgraded in order to do, to deliver better air quality? Or are we using existing duck work?
So the majority of the building actually doesn't really have much duct work in it.
Oh, so you're gonna start fresh.
Because of the way it's done. Yes, ma'am. There are a few areas that that's an exception to. And a couple of those have already were replaced and, and done new on a small project back in 2018. The remainder of the old stuff will be cleaned.
And so it really, you've already answered the question, but I'll ask it anyway. And so when the project is completed, is there a test for air quality, for the purity of the air?
Yes, ma'am. By state law, we are required to do radon testing in the building. And our D11 environmental shop, our certified guys, complete that testing, send the results to the state. That's something we do in-house, that's not done by the contractor. So we do that on every HVAC project.
Then I won't ask it the next time this comes up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Daniels.
Thank you for, it's been a long time coming for Queen Palmer. And I know they have like a year to hold on. So thank you for helping us get that done. When it comes to the students and the admin, while the construction is happening, what's the plan for them? Like what are we, is it just in the summer?
Correct.
Nobody will be in the building? Nobody will have to worry about any summer, I would say, work, how, you know what I mean? Sometimes they go in and try to get their classes ready for the next year, all of that stuff.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. That's a standard process that we use on every project. So we, when the, when the staff leaves, we make sure they take all their personal belongings, personal equipment, everything with them. And then we have all of the building to the contractors for safety, number one, for not just the contractors, but for the district staff as well. So all of the major construction will happen during the summer period while there's no staff or students in that building. Capital Programs will work very closely with the principal. If there's any delays, that we may have to have someone in there, you know, a few days after staff comes back, but not before the students come back. The only thing that happens after students come back, which is very common, because of the tight condensed timeline that we're, we're doing the construction within, is any of the state inspections and municipality inspections. But that's not an interruption to the education spaces. They're just coming in and looking and evaluating and making sure that it's all been constructed per code and meets all the design criteria that were set forth through the Building Department. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm looking at the write-up that you had out there. The construction begins on May 21st, 2024, and final completion date of August 2nd, 2024. So it happens in the summer timeframe. If Queen Palmer is scheduled for summer enrichment program, they will do it at a different school.
Correct. And that's, again, something Capital Programs works with on every construction project. We also work with the Rentals Department and all of those summer activities and programs. And we help to relocate those to other facilities.
Perfect. Director Nelson.
How many schools do we have that still do not have air conditioning? And if you don't know off the top of your head, you can get back to us later.
So I can answer the elementary 100%. We have one left, and we are currently working on a design effort and construction effort for that. That would be Howard Elementary. That would be the last elementary, I believe. Don't quote me and give you an exact answer, but I believe we have Palmer. We have Coronado with partial air conditioning. And Galileo has very little air conditioning. I think there's a total of five left, if I remember correctly off the top of my head.
West.
Oh, and West. West is, West is air-conditioned on the elementary side, but not on the middle school side.
Thank you. So Queen Palmer will now be completely air-conditioned, like the whole building?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you mentioned Coronado is partial, so this is everything.
Yes, and it's partially cooled now. The only thing that is cooled is the gymnasium, the auditorium, and then the newest addition on it. The rest of the building has no air conditioning, but it will when we're done. All brand new.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Very exciting.
Okay. Seeing no further questions from the Board. Oh, Julia, Director Ott.
Yes, thank you. I was just curious about how it will change energy use, if we're actually going to see savings or not.
Could you repeat that question again?
It's energy saves.
Yes, I'm curious about the energy usage, that the bringing in the air conditioning unit will change for us? Will it be more efficient?
So, so considering that the building no longer has, or does not have air conditioning right now, once we add that new infrastructure, there's obviously an energy cost to, to run that new air conditioning infrastructure. The existing heating system is not changing. That is staying, so there will be no energy cost savings or increase from a heating standpoint. From a ventilation standpoint, new codes require that we be more efficient in that. So the ventilation will be more efficient from an energy standpoint than what we currently have. So it's kind of a mixed answer for you. I hate to do that.
That sure is. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. My summary thoughts, actually, no questions, I don't think so. So I am reflecting back two years back around this time. Two years back around this time, the district was going to the community asking for a bond. And part of the bond request was repurposing Queen Palmer. Okay? For all intents and purposes, that was closing Queen Palmer. Now, we are talking about investing in Queen Palmer. We are moving the chips, all the chips there at the center of the table and saying, we are going to be investing in Queen Palmer because District 11 is growing. Okay? That's the message out there to the community. Over and over again, when Martinez came and said that they are 100 students, we have an amazing principal at Queen Palmer, and we see amazing academic growth and achievement that is happening there. By air conditioning that building, we are sending the message out that Queen Palmer is not closing anytime soon. Okay? Thank you so much. With that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The contract has been awarded. The contract has been awarded. I don't want to go ahead and say the name again. New charter school application. And I know several of you are here from Thomas McLaren. Thank you for your patience and waiting. Director Loma, can you please make the motion for Action Item F4?
I move that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2024-09 for the Thomas McLaren School Charter Application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The Board has reviewed this information on the charter school application during the September 6th work session and the September 13th regular Board Meeting. Superintendent Gall, do you have any additional information that the Board has to review at this point in time?
I just have an additional observation. If Cindy could please stand up in the back. I see her talking to her son. Cindy, can you stand up for just a moment? I want to publicly thank you for the translation services you provided for me yesterday in an impromptu meeting with some members of our Hispanic community. So just, it was, having lived a year abroad in Iraq and having had to have the intimacy of the language that I seek to use be translated into a foreign language, you were the best that I've ever seen. So I just want to thank you, and as a member of the Thomas McLaren community, just to recognize what, how nice it was to have you in that space last night. So thank you. Yeah, thanks. And not all things translate in Spanish. And Cindy was helpful to let me know that. So thanks. Scott, do you want to come forward just to introduce Mary Faith again?
Good evening, Board. I am here to represent Thomas McLaren for District 11. Our Executive Director for McLaren, Mary Faith Hall, is here. Also, a lot of, if not all, of her administrative team, of which I'm getting to know by first names, are also here, even spouses of some of the leadership team is here. So I'm very excited about this. Just a quick reminder that this application has been reviewed by experts within District 11. Our charter liaison, Tom Weston, who does this for a living, and said this was the best application he has ever read. Our DAC reviewed it as well. And so it has been widely reviewed. Our superintendent had three goals when he talked to me about charters. They were achievement, they were niche, and they were also enrollment. McLaren fills all three of these for, for that. So without further ado, I will turn it over if you have any other further, final questions for Ms. Hall or me. Happy to do it.
And thank you again. This is, I know, a momentous day. Maybe I'm using that word, but it's, it is an important day for Thomas McLaren, and it's an important day for District 11 too. So thank you all for being here. So thank you all for being here. Board, do you have any comments or questions before I call for Director Nelson?
Just, I want to share how exciting it is to have you all joining the D11 community and assuming this vote goes that way. I'm sure it will. And speaking to that niche piece, District 11, our traditional schools don't offer any sort of that core knowledge curriculum focus, and I think that is a gap that we have in our portfolio. And so we approved a charter application last spring that brings that to the table, but you also are going to help elevate what our families are offered in D11. And that is what jumped out to me in your presentation when you spoke to why you wanted to come and join District 11. It was your focus on serving District 11 families and how you intentionally chose to stay in our boundaries over the years, even when you were having to find new locations and that there maybe was appeal to go outside of our boundaries, but you chose to stay. And so that, I think, just speaks volumes and it helps us to be even more excited about you joining the team. So, welcome.
Director Loma.
I remember when we sold, I was on the board when we sold that property, and then you got it. And we were in that dilemma of shrinking, you know, people were leaving. And there was a clash of ideals going on back 10 years ago. But I can sense that we're coming together for the right reasons. You're educating kids, and you're in our district. And so we should, although you have your board and they're responsible, but we should take it, and we are taking it to heart, to help you do better. Because that'll help us do better. You're going to make us look good, because, believe me, we're going to use your stats and say, yeah, we're bad. You know, and that's just how it should be. It should be a win-win. And so I'm just pleased that I'm able to be here and make this vote so that our district is inclusive. We're not against each other. We're on the same side. And it's always been, you know, public against charter, and I hated that type of posturing. And we're breaking that down. We're all in this together, and these are all our kids in D11. And we hope that you steal some from 49 and 20 for us.
Director Jorgensen.
I just have a, well, first off, I've loved everything I've seen since the very beginning of the work session. But I had a question after talking with the parent. Have you always been a school that checks in cell phones at the beginning of the day and checks them out at the end of the day? Or was that ever not a practice?
Good evening, everybody. Yes, that's been a practice since day one.
Since day one, okay. And would you say that it's a huge benefit to having focused learning within your school?
I cannot imagine a school without that. Not just for the classroom, but also just for the social life of our students. You know, if you come by during recess, kids are hanging out and talking and playing and not on their screens.
Yeah. What a novel idea. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any further comments? And if so, I'm going to close with my last slide. So last week, on Thursday, I reached out to Dr. Mendelsburg through Superintendent Gall and requested that if there was an opportunity, if I can attend or visit Thomas McLaren School for an hour. And Ms. Mary Faith Hall, you were kind enough to immediately respond back and give me a time slot. So I want to share my visit to Thomas McLaren on Friday of last week, and I had a delightful visit out there. Got to see student learning happening in every single classroom. I was impressed with everything that I saw. Thank you for all your staff taking the time to showcase your school and the learning that is happening out there. Ms. Olson, are you pulling up my report? So the first thing that struck to me, struck at me at that time when we were talking about that was the cellphone policy that Director... Yeah, you can, you can just, yeah, I can do that. Is this working? Yeah, there you go. Okay, there you go. So this is the box that, in the middle of the box that's out there, that's the box that they have out there where kids in the morning have to check in their cell phones. And they don't get the cell phones during passing periods or during lunchtime. The only time they get to check out their cell phones is at the end of the day. So, and as Ms. Hall was talking about it, it created a learning environment where students were interacting with each other. When I was there during the lunch hours, I saw students talking with each other as opposed to being on their cell phones. So it certainly worked. I saw learning happen in the orchestra room out there where they were performing, and these students stopped their, what they were learning out there and put together a piece, just a two-minute piece, and it was delightful hearing the room resonate with music. I got an opportunity to walk into the staff lounge, and the teachers were out there. Got to talk to them for a couple of minutes, and they were excited to become part of District 11 too. So the thoughts that they shared was that they're looking forward to it, that they cannot wait to be part of our district because they are right in the middle, heart of District 11, and student learning taking place in every single classroom, whether it was elementary classroom, at elementary school, at the elementary kindergarten classroom. I approached a student out there, and she had a unique name. And as soon as I, before I could even say anything, she said to me, "My mom says that my name is very common in the country that I come from." And I said, "You and I have something in common. My mom says my name is common in the country I come from too," you know? But just having a kindergarten student just, you know, clearly express their thoughts, opinions, it was just awesome to see that out there. And then the same thing. It is the classroom, the senior classroom, which is the far end. I was talking to this senior, and she showed her school classwork, and she is doing circuit theory and the impact of parallel and series connections on resistors and Maxwell's theory, things that I haven't heard in 30 years. I, you know, she reminded me of it, and it was all neatly tabulated in the book out there. So thank you so much for that invitation. Some of the challenges that we face in District 11 with facilities, that school faces too, as far as air conditioning. That school didn't have air conditioning, but that doesn't stop the learning from happening out there. All the learning that took place, every classroom, there was active learning and engagement that is taking place. So thank you for the, again, for the opportunity to show me around, and I am excited that you are part of District 11. And parents make the choice as to what schools they want to take their children to. We are a school district of choice, and you being part of District 11, you offer a service that, a niche service, a classical education service that District 11 doesn't offer at this time. But if we choose to go down that road and we offer a similar quality of service, parents will have to make the decision where they end up going, and that's up to the parents to decide. So 50 or 60% of your families are from District 11, so now they are invested in the success of District 11 and future elections, a bond, a mill levy, or anything that we go to. So with that, thank you all for being here. I see some board members out here too in the audience, so thank you.
And I just, before you get to roll call, I want to clarify for the community that the action is to enter into contract negotiations with Thomas McLaren. So we are hopeful that those will be expedient and smooth, but that we are not, this is not, Thomas McLaren is now in District 11 on this motion. This is for us to enter contract negotiations, just to not get a cart in front of a horse.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. And one of the concerns that Ms. Hall expressed is that the contract negotiations hopefully is smooth and the board is not going to, or the District 11 board is not going to be imposing a lot of extra requirements of that school, which is successful and thriving. Even in the midst of pandemic, you showed increase in enrollment. So with that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
With that unanimous 7-0 vote, the board has expressed its desire to the district to enter into contract negotiations with Thomas McLaren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 20, moving on to the next action item. Resolution 2024-10, recognize aviation machine as made first-class naval aviation pilot, AMM 1C NAP Daniel Thornburg Griffin, October 6th, 2023. Okay, I'm going to make the motion for this. I move that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2024-10, designating October 6th, 2023, as Daniel T. Griffin Day in Colorado Springs School District 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and I am going to read that resolution here too. Do I have a copy of that resolution, Ms. Olson? You gave it to me, didn't you? I have it here. Okay. It is my honor, I do have it. It is my honor to read this resolution. Whereas AMM 1C NAP Daniel Thornburg Griffin was a resident of Colorado Springs, attended Colorado Springs High School and School District 11, graduating in 1928. After graduation, he enlisted in the United States Navy, served as a naval enlisted pilot of the Navy PBY Catalina assigned to Keane Hohe Naval Air Station Hawaii in 1941. And whereas on the morning of Sunday, December 7th, 1941, Daniel T. Griffin was on TOT with his PBY Catalina aircraft, and upon recognition of the ongoing Japanese attack, he attempted to take off in his aircraft, but was attacked and shot down by enemy aircraft. After exiting his aircraft and while swimming to shore, Griffin was shot and killed by enemy aircraft. And whereas AMM 1C NAP Daniel T. Griffin is known to be the first Colorado woman killed and strongly believed to be the first American serviceman killed during the attack on Pearl Harbor. And whereas shortly after the attack on Pearl Harbor, Admiral Chester Nimetz, Commander in Chief, Pacific Fleet, issued a citation recognizing Griffin's valor. And in 1943, the United States Navy commissioned the USS Daniel T. Griffin, a destroyer escort, in recognition of Griffin's sacrifice on December 7th. And whereas in 1947, Griffin's body was moved from its original burial location in Hawaii and re-interred in Evergreen Cemetery, Colorado Springs. And whereas a Veteran Hall of Honor mural exhibit has been established at Doherty High School to honor AMM 1C NAP Daniel T. Griffin and other Colorado veterans, now therefore be it resolved that the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education expresses its sincere gratitude to Petty Officer Daniel T. Griffin for his service and sacrifice in defending our country, as well as to his family. And be it resolved that the Board of Education designates October 6th, 2023, as Daniel T. Griffin Day in Colorado Springs School District 11. And resolved that the Board of Education encourages schools to raise awareness and understanding of the service, commitment, and sacrifice of our military men and women who selflessly give of themselves to protect and defend the United States of America. In witness whereof, we have here on to set our hands and cast official seal of said school District 11 to here on to affix this 27th day of September, 2023. The resolution has already been read, and the resolution has been, the motion has been made, and it has been seconded. I'm going to invite Captain Thomas. So to give some context, Captain Thomas approached me a few days back, a few, couple of weeks back, and asked if the board would consider this resolution. I talked to the board about this, and I want to thank the board for considering this and bringing this resolution in front of the board. Reading that resolution, it chokes me up, the commitment and service of our...
Much of what I'm going to say here is within that resolution, but this was started because I've taken a personal interest in this family. Because for four years, we constructed this Hall of Honor, and it had a professional muralist, and this person has been the focus, and the family is watching right now. The reason we chose October 6th was because the family was coming here. And I wanted to present this to them next week, but they've had a death in the family, some sickness, so they can't come. So now, hoping they'll be able to come in the spring. But I'll read what I have prepared here, which is very much within the resolution here. But I'll go through that, and I have a booklet. Details, everything about Daniel T. Griffin. Good evening. I am Captain Greg Thomas, and I teach Navy Junior RBC at Doherty High School. Thank you to Superintendent Gall, School District 11, School Board members. A special thank you to School Board President Dr. Malpakum for being an ardent Navy Chair or TCC supporter and for making this event possible. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to recognize an all-American family from Colorado Springs in School District 11. Let me take you back to 1928. 95 years ago, a student from Colorado Springs High School in School District 11 graduated. That student would go on to serve his country and make the ultimate sacrifice on December 7th, 1941. That student was Daniel Thornburg Griffin. Petty Officer Griffin, after graduation, joined the United States Navy in 1930. After a few years, he applied for and was accepted into a ten flight school as a naval aviation pilot. He earned his wings of gold and was eventually assigned to Patrol Squadron 12, the Black Hats Flying PBY, more commonly known as a flying boat. He was stationed at Conne O'Vee Bay Naval Air Station, which is on the eastern side of Hawaii, of Oahu. On December 7th, 1941, Petty Officer Griffin was on duty. As enemy aircraft approached, he called for his crew to man the plane and to start the engines. He swam out to the PBY and commenced takeoff. His aircraft was shot down as it became airborne. All crew members got out of the damaged aircraft. As he was swimming to shore, enemy aircraft streamed the water, and Petty Officer Griffin was killed instantly. By all accounts, he was the first Colorado man killed and most likely the first American casualty of the Pearl Harbor attack. His family, wife Lucille, son Donald, age 1, and daughter Danielle, age 7, were present at Conne O'Vee Naval Air Station and witnessed all of this when the attack occurred. Conne O'Vee Naval Air Station was attacked before Pearl Harbor due to the strategic significance of the PBY aircraft. Son Donald was injured in the attack, receiving a concussion when an bomb exploded near their home. Both Donald and Danielle, when they became adults, joined the United States Navy. Donald was completing a full naval career. Admiral Chester Nimetz, Commander in Chief of Pacific Fleet, issued a citation recognizing Petty Officer Griffin's valor, earned his title at Conne O'Vee on that fateful day. In February of 1943, Lucille, the wife of Petty Officer Griffin, had the honor of christening the destroyer escort class USS Daniel T. Griffin, DE-54. USS Griffin would go on to serve the United States Navy during World War II with honor, surviving three complicated attacks as well as many battles. She was decommissioned in 1994. Both Petty Officer Griffins PBY aircraft and his ship are immortalized in the Hall of Honor at Doherty High School. I invite all board members who have not seen the Hall to please make kind of a visit. Petty Officer Griffin, after the war in 1947, was brought home, brought home to Colorado Springs and re-interred at Evergreen Cemetery near family members. For several years, an adoring Navy Chair or TCC has adopted Petty Officer Griffin as a gravesite, to commemorate his sacrifice at every memorial day and at Christmas time during the seasons across America. I'd like to thank the superintendent and the school board for taking the time to recognize the family of Daniel Thornburg Griffin for recognizing October 6th, 2023, as Daniel T. Griffin Day in School District 11. To the family of Daniel T. Griffin, wife this evening, America School District 11. And I appreciate and honor the sacrifice of your father, because Donald is still with us. He's in his eighties now. Grandfather and great-grandfather, it is in my honor to immortalize his actions that day, and grateful School District 11 has been able to honor him this way. May Daniel and your entire family always have fair winds and following seas. I look forward to meeting all of you in the spring when you visit Colorado Springs. Thank you, Superintendent Gall and School Board members.
Thank you.
I would like to personally thank you for bringing Daniel Griffin to our attention. I am a military family, Air Force and Navy. My son is currently in Hawaii, on Oahu, and I have had the honor to visit Normandy. You have put flesh and blood to the sacrifices that our military are willing to take in order for us to have a free, open country. Your willingness to work with the RCTC and several of us, most of us have been to Dory for their programs where your RCTC has demonstrated the skills and the discipline to be a military person who will fight for the freedom of our country. We've also, many of us have been at Dory to see the program over there as well. The appreciation that I want to share with you is not only for myself and my family, the people of... the people with whom I am friends with and my sphere of influence. And I would like to be able to say all of America, thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you very much for your time.
I took some type of looks at that book that you provided us and a quote stuck out to me from one of the memos that they gave there today for our tomorrow. And I think that is something to, it's a somber thing to sit and stew on because it's so true and something that, you know, that we should recognize. So I've been into the mural. I've liked the having one of your town going up my mantle at home. And I've heard there's some debate and discussion of who's going to be better around here. But that's a discussion for another time. But the mural is beautiful. You can tell a lot of words to be put into that. And as your open house is able to sit with you and see what you're interested in introducing about in the ROTC program you run there. So thank you for your efforts and your dedication to the high excellence in that classroom. It was definitely evident. So thank you, sir, for recognizing this family.
I just want to extend my gratitude also to the family. It's very striking to think about his children also entered into service and they're just so appreciative of their service to our country. And thank you also for your service in helping lead our young people in military. I mean, Director Bankes said it so very well in protecting our freedom. So thank you.
I think one exercise we ought to do is probably visit a military cemetery. I don't know the number of times we've filled the crosses and I encourage you to look at the ages, the problems, the boys, the young men. I know when I'm just young, my gosh darn. A whole lot, a lot of the chances of living there are out there for us. So you remember our memories, yeah? So, uh, good to be with you, sir.
Thank you. Seeing you for the comments. Thank you again for bringing this resolution in front of the board. This was Daniel T. Griffin. I did not know the story behind it. I'm delighted to visit your mural and you want me to eat one of the significance of the mural and share your story with me. And I'm glad that this is the least that we can do to recognize this man who gave up his life and the sacrifice that he made and this family that are watching up there. Thank you. Thank you for your sacrifice, your commitment out there. And if we are enjoying the freedom in this country right now and all the. All that goes with it is because of the facts of people like these who were selflessly willing to commit themselves and sacrifice their lives. With that, roll call, please.
Director Bankes, I, Director Daniels.
Hi.
Director Jorgensen.
Hi.
Director Loma.
Hi.
Director Malpakum.
Hi.
Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Ott.
Hi.
The ayes have it. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you, Captain Thomas. And please let the board know in the spring when the family is visiting, I'm sure the board will be interested in yeah, visiting then. Thank you. And thank you to the students from Doherty. I know that we get you both happy or. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the article and the opening of speaking to us. Resolution twenty-four dash zero eight, National Principal Appreciation Month, October first through the thirty-first. Whereas it is the primary responsibility of the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education and the superintendent to preserve and improve resources for schools so that all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And whereas school principals play an integral role as instructional leaders in the education and growth of students in elementary, middle, and secondary schools in Colorado Springs School District.
And whereas school principals are responsible for promoting education and building the relationships to ensure that each student receives services that meet their needs to excel in the classroom and life. And whereas school principals face many challenges in supporting and educating our young people. And it is through their perseverance and passion that Colorado Springs School District eleven continues to produce quality, career-ready students. And whereas we will continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals who continually ensure a positive impact on students and the educational process. Therefore, the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education does hereby proclaim the month of October first through the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as Principal's Appreciation Month. I move that the Board of Education approves resolution two thousand twenty-four zero eight, endorsing October two thousand twenty-three as National Principal Appreciation Month.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Gall, are we going to have somebody that's going to?
I do not have anything prepared for this.
Okay. Okay. My notes say that Darren Smith is going to be here. I don't see him here.
He is not.
Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any comments before adopting this resolution. We all know that principals form the integral bone, backbone of our school system. We deeply appreciate our principals. They make or break a school. So, and we have more principals that make our school now. So we saw some of them earlier this evening. With that, roll call, please.
Aren't you going to take comments?
I don't see, okay. Do we need to? Okay, there you go. Comments. Director Bankes.
I want to speak to the appreciation for our principals. I think on the time that I've been on this board and with this superintendent, that we have done more to support our principals than any district I have been in. This is my fourth district, all in El Paso County. Actually, I've been in other districts, but here in Colorado, in El Paso County. To a person, they have said to me that whenever they've asked for support, it has been support, not necessarily evaluative support, but support. And when we see our schools come and talk about the strides that they are making and the moves they are making that benefit our kids, support their teachers, I look back at our board and our superintendent to say that this is a, this is an endeavor that we have taken on wholeheartedly to make sure that we are doing the best for the adults as well as for our students. And so, principals, I hope you know that you are appreciated for the hours, the time, the commitment, the compassion, and the empathy that you put into your daily lives in order to make our school environment welcoming, striving to be our best, and compassionate. Thank you.
Any further comments from board members? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankes.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpakum.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion has been adopted.
It's Al. You can get one. You'll get yours.
Director Ott, the next action item on the agenda is Operation Procedures Manual. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item F seven?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approves the revised version of the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education Operating Procedures Manual.
Has it been seconded?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. This item has been reviewed, worked on, and revised during board retreat, several work sessions, and regular board meetings. So are there any further comments from the board at this point in time? This was also discussed at the last work session. Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankes.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpakum.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion has been adopted. The revised Board Operating Manual. And Ms. Olson, you can post the new document on the board website. Resolution, the next resolution that's on front of the board, Board Member Compensation. Director Bankes, can you please make the motion for action item F eight?
I move that the Board of Education adopts resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six, Board Member Compensation to take effect for board members elected or re-elected in November twenty twenty-three and thereafter per the requirements of CRS. I don't know what that number is. Is that an S or?
Twenty-two.
Oh, starting with twenty-two dash thirty-two dash one oh four. Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is an item that has been reviewed, worked on, and revised at the board, regular board meeting. It was there at the September twentieth. We discussed it briefly at the work session last week, too. So I shared some of the questions that the board had at that time at the last work session. I don't have any further updates. Chief Bailey, do we have any other updates regarding some of the questions the board had?
And Malpakum, board members, and Mr. Gall. No, we do not. We are working with Deb Makin, legal counsel. Chris Odom and I met today. And we are also reaching out to a former employee that has contacts with para to make sure that we will come up with the best plan for you as board members in order to take advantage of this resolution.
Director Bankes.
And so remind me again that for those of us who have a para retirement, it stands outside of, I understand the deductions are being made, but it stands outside of an employment agreement in the sense that it would change the status for those who collect a retirement.
That is true. Those of you that receive retirement from para will continue to pay the eleven percent out of that compensation or stipend or per diem. We have not figured out what that language will be. But yes, you will be required to pay the eleven percent.
That's not the question. The question is if it changes the retirement status.
No, it does not change your retirement status. But our suggestion would be that you still continue to monitor the amount of money that you receive and that you still stay aligned to the requirements for how much you can make.
Is it going to be reported as a ten ninety-nine?
We're looking at that, or it could be a memorandum of agreement. So we're still trying to figure out what is the best course of action.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Director Loma.
Well, I can just say it's about time. And it's not going to benefit me, but there are a lot of people that want to be here and just can't because of different constraints. And oftentimes, it's money. And it may not seem like a lot, but if you got a babysitter or whatever you got to do, that'll take care of a lot of those things. And it's not a lot of money, but it does, I think, open it up to more diverse people, candidates. So I'm pleased that it's finally happened. Although I'm not going to get a penny, I'll be gone. But anyway, for the next group.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
Yeah, I just wanted to share out a little about that there are other school districts that have adopted compensation for their school boards. Harrison District Two, there's some districts up in Denver. So when the state changed the rules that boards could now be compensated, we're not the first to this, but I agree with Director Loma that it's going to help allow other people to come and be supportive of District eleven through serving on the board. And I think that it will support their families as they are also a part of the team. And they have to deal with us being at these meetings till late and the extra hours that we put in volunteering in a week. So the compensation amount is not large by any means. I mean, for the number of hours that we put in, it probably, I think, Dr. Malpakum, you said once, it's like five cents an hour, depending on how many hours you're putting in a week. It's really not a lot, but it's something. And it helps the families. And to Director Loma's point, this is not going to impact the current board. It's for the future board of whoever is elected in November. That being said, I recognize there are three people running for election in November. And while it currently is not technically a conflict for them to vote on this, I think it would just be a benefit for perception that us board members consider maybe making a motion that they recuse themselves just so that they're not put in a sticky situation and that they can maintain any appearances of unethicals or anything like that. So I would just put that out there that it is something we could pursue and allowing them to step away from this vote so that they can maintain just all appearances of integrity and neutrality.
Are you making the motion?
No, we can get to that. I just want to get the comments first. Director Loma.
Well, I'm not sure you have to make a motion. All you have to do is recuse yourself.
Well, my understanding is, when I talk to legal counsel, the state law says that the school board has to recuse a board member from not participating in a motion. So we cannot recuse ourselves. It is the school board that has to recuse the board members that are interested. And there is a conflict of interest here. And when you go back to the Board Operating Manual itself, and I read from the Board Operating Manual, it says, "In carrying out his or her fiduciary duties, a board member shall not," and it say, "perform an official act which directly and substantially confirms an economic benefit tantamount to a gift." So thank you for bringing that up, Director Nelson. If the board is willing to consider that motion, I would like to recuse myself. We do need, we do need a motion. Yeah. Director Jorgensen, do you want to be considered? It's up to the board whether they want to be part of this motion or not.
Are you going to make the motion or give it over?
Well, I know. But I want to make sure which board directors want to be recused from the motion. So that's why I'm asking. From, recused from, that they, okay, Director Jorgensen, do you have any thoughts or comment? Okay. So all three board directors said yes. Okay. Can you make a motion?
President Malpakum, pray your. We have a motion on the table already.
Yes. 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 Now, the motion that is being made is being amended to, it's being amended to allow the board directors not to participate in the previous motion. So once this new motion is adopted, if it is adopted by the board, then we will go back to the original motion that is on the floor.
I don't think you can have a new motion when a motion is on the table.
Okay.
Okay.
I can. Okay. Okay. Can you?
Julie, can they table it? You don't want to table it. But then you come to ask it.
This is just a friendly amendment to the current motion.
I talked to legal counsel. And legal counsel, I'm following the guidance that's provided by legal counsel. And legal counsel was the one that gave me the things. Unless all of us out here are experts in Robert's rules, I'm going to follow what legal counsel gave me the direction out there. Okay? I can forward the email that came from legal counsel when. when, you know, when I asked how to proceed in this matter. We are amending the original motion, okay, to say that three board members are being recused. Okay? Okay, we will vote for the amendment first and then go back to the original motion. Okay. Director Loma, are you ready to make the motion? Amend the original motion?
Yeah, I'm going to amend a friendly amendment to our current motion. I move that we recuse three board members. President Par, well, you know the names, just put the names down.
Say it, say it.
President Par, Malpakum, Jason Jorgensen, and who else? And Darlene Daniels, that they be recused from the current motion.
Moved and seconded. And this only the, we are not, since it's impacting us, we will not, the three board members stated are not going to vote on it. It's going to be the remaining four board members that vote on it. Go ahead.
Director Bankus, aye. Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So the three board members have been recused from the original motion. So now the original motion is on the floor with the amendment that was mentioned by Director Loma. Okay, any further comments on it? I think we have commented.
President Malpakum, I had a question. Did we get the budget estimate if there were seven board members who had para standards?
Mr. Comfort is here. Dr. Comfort is here.
Yeah, good evening. So we did do some estimates. Now, this is assuming in the future, all seven board members take six days, all twelve months of the year, and all receive a twenty-two percent para cost of the district. So.
It's an extreme case.
Yes, it's the maximum, I believe that's what the question was. And the maximum amount would be ninety-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Can you repeat that, please?
Ninety-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the total cost over the course of the year.
But that's not going to even happen until 2025, when seven board members would be eligible to take that because four board members.
I have lots of other numbers that I'm willing, I'm happy to answer if needed.
I think you answered Director Ott's questions. Director Ott, did that answer your question?
It sure did. I recognize that that is an extreme case situation, but I did want to know the maximum we might be looking at. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, roll call, please.
President Malpakum?
Yes.
Actually, that answered that question. I just, I do want to make a note that I think that we as a board might want to come to some kind of understanding about what, what a day or a commitment looks like that counts toward one of these six days. Again, I think showing up for meetings that are optional may not want, we may not wish to count them. So we need to set up some parameters. And I just have to kind of muse on that note that we'll probably have to update the operating and procedures manual. But that's something for the future. Thank you.
And maybe I'm mistaken. I thought the resolution details what are the days that qualify for this compensation of per diem as Chief Bailey called. It specifically says what are the days that are allowed and what don't qualify. Optional meetings do not qualify under the resolution. It does? Option, what are you talking?
Sorry, I don't know if you're asking or expecting a response from me. I do think that it's something we'll want to look at again. But again, in the future, we don't have to do it tonight.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
President Malpakum, can you please clarify what motion I am taking a roll call on?
The motion is going to be on the original motion, and I will read the motion. Okay. I'm, the Board of Education adopted Resolution 2022-2024-06, Board Member Compensation to take effect for board members elected or reelected in November 2023 and thereafter per the requirements of. And the amended motion was that the board adopt this resolution without recusing, recusing the three board members that have a direct conflict with this resolution.
Correct, but the recusal itself was a motion. So we're just voting on the original language now.
Yeah, the recusal has been, that was a motion that was adopted by the board.
So the recusal language is not part of the motion?
It's an amendment to the previous motion.
Okay.
It was amended. The previous motion was amended. Okay?
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
She's recused.
Director?
Loma?
Loma?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The resolution has been adopted. And Secretary Olson, I will talk to you behind the scenes. So there is some clarity if you need. Non-action item, policy JH, student absence and absences and excuses. This is again new information. Dr. X.
Good evening, President Malpakum, members of the board, Superintendent Gall. Before I begin, President Malpakum, congratulations. You're, I was at the ceremony this evening to watch your daughter inducted into the National Honor Society at Doherty High School.
I missed it.
I know, I know. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Well, I think your daughter got inducted, too, didn't she?
Yes, exactly. So it was great.
Thank you.
It was a very nice event, so. Policy JH is being revised to align to new scheduling practices across all schools to strengthen the policy language by incorporating key elements from the current regulation into the policy and to align the policy with CASB recommendation. Currently, CASB does not include a regulation to policy JH and advises that including specific language related to state attendance law be placed into the broader policy. The revisions presented to you this evening evidence this language. The revisions also include removing the ten to twenty-minute absence designations to accommodate district-wide block scheduling practice. Daily attendance practices are not affected by the revision of this policy. Student attendance is still collected during all periods and all sections per Colorado regulation. And additionally, no district mandated reporting practices will change as a result of the policy revision. I've also asked that Director Chris Brandt be here this evening. He is the director of student engagement. And he can help with some questions if the board has.
Before we get to questions, I have inserted myself into this process and I'm requesting the board to send this back to committee. Although I appreciate the desire for us to remove things that we think that are holding kids back from getting to school, what we didn't do is add in the regulation portion of how it is that we will further enhance our own attendance practices. We reported to CDE this year, I'll just pick the chronic absenteeism number. Forty percent of our students last year reported as chronically absent. If you just take ballpark numbers, forty percent of twenty-two thousand is about ten thousand kids. Chronically absent means ten percent more, which means ten thousand kids missing at least eighteen school days a year. And so, and now I don't know if that's because we're counting them as absent at ten minutes and twenty minutes or if that means because they're actually not attending school. What I also am very worried about as a superintendent is from an accountability perspective, that if there were to be a dire emergency in a building and I needed to provide law enforcement and immediate understanding of who I thought was in the building at that time, I'm not confident by my own visits to buildings that I could give that with a level of clarity that I think that would put us in a good position. So I think our practices are a little loose. And while I appreciate the desire of the committee to make this a more accessible space, we have to at the same time bring this to the board that says, here's what we're going to do on our part for this.
Thank you. With that explanation, board, looks like the recommendation that's coming from Superintendent Gall itself is to send this back to policy with maybe some guidance from the board at this time. Director Nelson?
Yeah, I just was going to share with the rest of the board. Director Ott and myself were able to attend this policy committee meeting and observe the conversation. And there is concern for some members that there needs to be a district-wide guidance rather than it being left school to school. And then some members believing that we can let it be at the school level to determine whether a student is marked as tardy or absent and what that would look like. So this was kicked to us, not as that there was necessarily full agreement on what the current policy looks like in front of us today, but more of an ask that we provide some direction and guidance because the committee felt as though they were being put into a, some members of the committee felt as though they were being put in a position of having to provide that guidance and direction when really it should come from the board. So this is sometimes where the direction of the board to the policy committee, policy committee to the board gets a little hazy on what the best practices there could look like to help get the board direction to the committee so they know how to move. But that's not how we're currently operating. So Director Ott, do you have anything to add? I guess, since you were at that meeting as well.
Thank you. I think you addressed the concerns of the committee fairly well. And certainly Lyman Kaiser sent an email to all of us today as well that addressed some of the issues. I will have a follow-up comment when you're done, Director Nelson.
Excuse that last part, I just didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, I just said I would have a follow-up comment to your comments.
Yeah, so I don't know how this works. Do we need to have a go-to-a-work session where we can have more conversation about it? Of what exactly we want this policy to look like? And I don't know if, Mr. Brandt, you want to give the context that the reason partly that we're looking at this is because District Eleven appears to have just outrageous numbers compared to the other districts. But it might be that we were just holding ourselves to a higher standard and so those numbers could be inflated. And so how do we address that?
Yeah, the concerns came from a couple of different avenues. And some schools have expressed some concerns around what the policy says versus maybe having a little bit more flexibility. And the primary purpose was really knowing that the block schedule at the high school, the way it was currently worded, does not really reflect with a ninety-minute block. They're just, I think the common consensus was we need to address that and kind of tackle that for sure. And then really beyond that, what else, or what are the other needs that are being discussed across the district and how do we support them? And, but yes, absolutely, we do have some attendance and truancy concerns that we need to kind of keep working on and support and make sure that we're showing growth in because we are behind the general state level of truancy and those absence-related issues.
And based on the email that Lyman Kaiser sent us, it seems that the state actually already has some definitions in place that we just need to roll into our policy. And that might be helpful to guide us, too.
Yeah, a lot of the language is spelled out in law and policies. And so, yeah, there's, that was part of some of the discussion that we had at the policy committee of how much of the law do we include in policy when it's already a state law? And so I think that probably will be some of the guidance that you guys provide for the committee of how much and to what extent. And then I think looking at what the committee has to kind of tweak and make it appropriate for all levels of District Eleven schools.
Sounds good. So I guess, I don't know if this makes sense, but I would recommend that we take this to a work session then, so.
Director Ott has a comment. Director Ott.
Yes, thank you. I, when I first read this policy and looked at considerations, it's page two, and it talks about the responsibility of the student to request or access or obtain and make up work. Make-up work assignments shall be provided for any class in which a student has an excused absence. And my concern was that we would not give students the opportunity, if it wasn't, to make up work if it was an unexcused absence. And I just, I realized that unexcused absences, any absences, are inconveniences for teachers. But do we want to, do we want to go forward making it clear that students can make up work if they miss a class? Or is that just something better left to the teacher? Perhaps the superintendent can address that.
The superintendent's comments would be, I believe that's the district's requirement to fulfill. But we'll be on the record that says we want kids excused or unexcused to be able to make up all possible work. I'm not sure I'm following the difference between excused and unexcused. And I don't, the challenge with chronic absenteeism is if we use it as a further penalty that we can't give children access to make up the work, then as soon as a kid gets to chronically absent, then they're done for the year. And then our dropout rate's going to increase. So it's clear to me that this is not ready for even the public discussion that we're having right now. And so I'll work with the committee members for us to then find a time to get this to a work session and get direction from the board on where they want the policy to go for the district to then supply.
Thank you. It was also my concern that students who may have things out of their control would then be penalized and never be able to make up that work. So I appreciate that additional understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if the board is comfortable with this, we can bring this back to a future work session, have a more extensive discussion at that time and provide some guidance going back to the policy committee. Okay? Perfect. So this is not going to come as action item two weeks from now. It has to come first at the work session in front of the board before it returns in front of the board again. The next non-action item, Board of Education and District Smart Goals. This is again new information, but we have discussed it in several work sessions. I think, yeah, it has come in several work sessions and also at the board retreat. We discussed that. And the Smart Goals was initially crafted with the help of our facilitator who facilitated the board retreat. And then Director Nelson had some thoughts on how the language can be more tighter on the Smart Goals. I'm going to defer to Director Nelson first so she can share what is on the new document and then we can open it up for discussion. Director Nelson?
Yeah, so the board adopted goals already. But when I looked back at them, I realized they weren't really in a smart format. They included the how. And so that was my initial thought, was to get them more in line with that specific measurable, achievable, results-focused and time-bound formatting. And so they're much more succinct now. And then the original goals that we adopted were maybe more in a detailed level or specific to, say, third-grade reading proficiency levels. And so I used what we had previously and took them to a higher level so that as it, these are more of district-level type Smart Goals and that, you know, a tenth-grade teacher, this is now going to be relevant to them as well. You know, a third-grade reading proficiency level is not so relevant to a tenth-grade teacher. But when we speak to, we want literacy to improve at the K through twelve level, that impacts all of our students and staff. And with the intention that if we focus on literacy, then we will see results in other core subject areas and. then we will see results in other core subject areas and decreasing dropout rates and just so many benefits if we really buckle down and focus on literacy. And then at the Board level, it will help us in making decisions on future budgeting and time, how we're spending all of these resources. Do they align to our Smart Goals? And so I had narrowed it down to four goals specifically and the conversation at the work session last week, some Board members were unsure about removing the dropout goal and I can understand their concerns. My thought was that if we focus on the learning, then we will see that the dropout rates will be symptomatic of what we are focusing on in that literacy piece and the free and reduced lunch piece and the safety goal and, you know, the other goal about accreditation for our schools. So let me think. I will just say that if we, if the Board decides to maintain this dropout goal, we need to probably tweak the language and remove the graduation rates, at least out of the title, because we're not speaking... We say that the result of lowering dropout rates will be an increase in graduation rates, but we're not specifically focusing on graduation rates with this goal. So I'll leave my comments at that. I requested that we kick this to a non-action item so that we can have further conversation with the Superintendent present because this is not necessarily just the Board's goals, this is the district's goals and so we absolutely want his input. And when I worked on these goals, I was speaking with him and so he can maybe now give voice to those conversations that we had and where he stands on these goals.
So I appreciate Director Nelson's efforts to put an overarching set of goals for the Board. I think the, for the district through the lens of the Board. And so I want to talk a little bit about the difference between a senior governance team and then a senior leadership team. This is a senior governance team that should be setting very high aspirational, simple goals for the district to then go deliver. I think I made it clear last year that my team, the administration, was going to deliver on an action plan with or without a set of district goals as communicated by the Board. We had Board priorities of which we then systematized and operationalized and created that I shared at my mid-year plan, the Superintendent's evaluation performance of what, of how I was going to stair-step away to be able to get that. That's the language that we speak and it's, I won't comment on whether or not it's working or not, we achieve those metrics. Now, the question is, is it working means it needs to fit and niche into the larger set of district goals, which is what you all have been crafting on. And I appreciate Director Nelson in putting the time in to try and discern the difference of do we just adopt the things that Superintendent Gall's team is working on and say, well, the Board's working on them too, or do we take a higher lens? And albeit in honor of the Captain bringing Mr. Griffin's work to us today, there were teams that were planning a war in Europe and a war in the Pacific and it was a senior governance team that said, "Europe first," even though we were attacked in Pearl Harbor. The decision was made at the governance level for our country that said, "We will fight in both theaters, but we will put the preponderance of our resources and attention into ensuring that we win in Europe first and just don't lose in the Pacific." That singular decision likely saves millions of lives in Europe and probably creates the free Europe that you have today. So in translation of this language, I believe that the goals that were presented prior to the inclusion of the high school specificity stand alone in that Europe-first idea. We are a district that's about literacy, we are a district about ensuring that children that don't have the access and supports through the lens of their socioeconomic status are also paid attention to and that it is a place where people seek to feel safe in their environment. I think as soon as we go into that high school dropout and graduation rate, now it looks like something that my secondary team is working on. So it's like, I'm talking to my team about every high school leader calling me every time a kid drops out. I need to know what we could have done to stop that. That's a micrometric of what I'm accountable for. You certainly want to know that we're not losing more kids, but I'll tell it through the graduation rate. Many a district, particularly in the urban environment, have figured out how to meet their graduation requirement, but not pay attention to, did students come to school and are they actually literate? So you cannot show up to school because you don't, there's no, there's no days of attendance, it's the credit earned. And so you can go into credit recovery and get all the credits. So you have a kid that goes to school for 170 out of 185 school days, so they're not even chronically absent and gets a D and doesn't, or D or an F and doesn't graduate. And in other systems, I've seen kids not go to school and then just show up for credit recovery and go click, 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 click and get the credit. So I've met your graduation goal, but I certainly haven't met your intent. Your intent of what you're communicating in the top three of these is we want to be a learned institution. We are a learned institution, but you want to set a set of goals that communicates it more clearly. So my recommendation would be you adopt and maybe you wordsmith the top three, but you drop the high school dropout and graduation rate. And then you say to me, boy, you know, I looked at the numbers and either enrollment's down or achievement still hasn't got there, then I'm telling you that this is where that problem is.
Thank you.
It is an infinite loop of conversation here of who owns what metric. The coherence and alignment of them right now sits in a pretty nested way that the work that we're doing is easily niching right into the three overarching goals.
Director Bankus?
So we've talked about this in work session and in listening to your delineation of high-level governance and operational governance or leadership governance and as I look at these, I find them to be redundant of what we're already asking the district to do. It's another report that needs to be generated which takes time from people doing the work that they need to do that will significantly impact what's going on in the classroom. So I don't see a need for this.
Okay. Any further thoughts from any other Board members at this point in time before? Director Nelson?
I'll just, I guess, respond in that this helps us to be more focused and we have some general priorities behind us, but this is really going to help us hone in on some key components that will improve student outcomes for all kids. And so that is why I see this as being necessary and we're putting a stake in the ground that by this timeframe, this is what's going to happen and I don't think we have that anywhere else. I don't think we have specific timelines attached to any of our goals. I know the Superintendent crafted some with his performance report and this, that those aren't going to go away. He's still going to work on that because that's how he's going to end up reaching these higher-level goals. So this isn't to just ignore the work that he's already done, it's more of helping, I guess, the Board and the rest of the staff to take ownership that it's not just the Superintendent trying to do the work, it's all of us. This is, this is all of the district working together.
So the Superintendent Performance Report had some goals and deadlines associated with it and, yeah, and the Board priorities that we adopted, we did a lot of metrics, but as we talked about at the work session, they were a large number of goals associated with each one of them. This helps us focus on two, three priorities and then as the budget process comes about, we can also align our budget allocation based on these priorities. So it would help out from that manner. Director Jorgensen?
I appreciate the goals and the work done. I believe it will guide our work. I don't want to send this back anywhere else around the horn again. You know, it's redundant at this point. I like the first three goals, I like the first four goals, excuse me, sorry, getting late. I'm on the fence about the last one, so if we want to let that be more operational with Superintendent Gall, that's fine, but these are the things we've heard from our community. These are the things that we've, we want to be, be about and talk about as a Board that is looking to help student outcomes and so I'm good for the first four goals and send her through.
Director Loma?
I like the way this is set up because when we evaluated the Superintendent, this is gonna, it forces you to focus on what we talked about in your, in the evaluation. It's gonna, it's almost like it's, it's made to make you better, which I like, because if you're better, we're all better. You know, it's made to make sure that you're doing your job, you're increasing literacy, you're doing all the things that we should be, we should have been doing for decades. This has never been done. Everything in public education has been very open-ended and then nobody's been held accountable. And this is a very accountable, easy peasy to read. It is, you know, you don't have to be a brain surgeon to figure out, are we doing our job or not? It's very easy. You know, and so the simplicity of it is, I like, but it's not that simple. But it gives us something to look at and without being a brain surgeon. So I really appreciate the work of the Superintendent putting this there for, to make it, well, I'm sorry, Laura, you, you, yeah, you're right, you're right. But the, well, the group stimulated her and then she got, she got, went wild, all right? But it was, it was the first intent to bring it to us at the work session and then of course, being, she's very meticulous in a lot of things, right, which is a good thing. And because she'll point out that, I go, dang, she saw that? I go, that's a good catch, but, but I do, I like this and I think it's going to serve us well.
Okay. Does Director Ott have any comments at this?
Yes, thank you. I am fine, I understand the Superintendent's point and I am fine with dropping that last one.
Okay. With that, is the Board thumbs up that we are okay with dropping the last one? So this will come as an action item two weeks from now, so the Board can formally adopt it and thank you for the work that you put into it, Director Nelson, in crafting this goals. It comes back to me, if I can summarize it, we are a district of accountability and that starts from the Board diars with the Superintendent. It's easy to say we don't have any specific goals and we are going to overall talk about student outcomes, staff investment, but we as a Board are collectively saying we are willing to stick our neck out and say that we are putting the stake in the ground and this is what we are shooting for and some of these goals are going to be high goals that we are, if the district achieves it in three, four years' time, it would put the district in a position that they have not been in the last 20 years. I don't know how far away, how far back we need to go, but we are willing to say that we want to improve student outcomes. That's what we are all about, that student academic needs and outcomes triumphs, all that, everything else. We just want to make sure that our students are able to read right and be at grade-level proficiency so that when they graduate, they are prepared for success, whatever that next step is in their journey, whether it's career or college or the military or serving in the community in some capacity. Okay. Future agenda items for Board discussions, tasks? Are there any? Director Bankus, you're up first.
We got an email that asked us to take another look at Policy DFG, Revenues Generated From Activities and Fundraisers. So I want to bring it to a work session for a conversation to see if it, if the Board wants to move this into an agenda item for a Board meeting. So it's revenues generated from activities and fundraisers.
Yeah.
And it's Policy DFG.
Okay. Is the Board comfortable with that request? This was an email that the Board received. What Director Bankus is asking for is a review of that policy and see if any revisions need to be made to that policy. And I don't know when the last time that policy was...
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it was two years back, it was recently revised, but still maybe based on the comment that we received, public comment, public email comment that we received to the Board, maybe it's necessary to look at it. So is the Board, by a show of thumbs up, are we good with one, two, three, four, five? Okay. I got five Board members to give thumbs up, so. Any other requests from the Board at this time? Director Ott is good too. Okay. Calendar review. On Wednesday, October 4th, wow, next week, we are already into October, we have a work session. In that work session, we are going to have the five other school USIPS being presented along with the U-DIP, which is the District Improvement Plan. So there are six plans that are going to come in front of the School Board at that time. We will persevere through that and hopefully we will be able to have a robust conversation about that. We want to make sure that all these schools' plans are ideally set up for, so that they can come out of their current statewide status. So that's the main thing on October 4th, that could be a lengthy discussion by itself. October 11th is a regular Board meeting, October 18th is a work session and I don't have the agenda for those at this point in time. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, on October 4th, yes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. If you need a virtual link, we will let you know. I mean, you let us know. Okay. Okay. We'll still send you a link, Director Loma, and then, yeah, if you can join us, you can join us. May I have a motion to adjourn? Move then second-hand rule call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
We are officially adjourned at 9:42 PM and there are some resolutions that Board members have to sign. Please remember to sign those resolutions and give it to Secretary Olson before leaving.